The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA VII or Spectrum.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us for this special board meeting. I'd like to kick the meeting off by starting with roll call. Beth, if you could help us with that, please.
Thank you. Becker?
Here.
McCoy?
Here.
Sit Nakow?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Here.
Warren?
Here.
All right, all six board members are present. Only agenda item that we have for our special board meeting tonight is the election of the Board of Education Vice President. Just a reminder that former Vice President Shelton resigned about a week and a half ago, and so this process is to elect her replacement. So with that, anyone who would like to nominate anyone else on our board to serve as the Vice President, once we have any and all nominations, we'll take a voice vote on that position.
I nominate Brenda Warren.
Second.
They don't require a second.
Any other nominate, any other nominations? All right, Beth, I think we're ready to vote.
Smith? Oh, I'm sorry.
Do we say who we're voting for, or we say I because there's only one person?
I think you say who you're voting for because technically I think nominations aren't really binding.
Okay.
Unless I've checked on this, so.
Thank you, Andrew. All right, go ahead and then say the person that you'd like to vote for.
Thank you. Smith?
Brenda?
Brandon Hugel?
Brenda?
Warren?
Brenda?
Sit Nakow?
Brenda?
Becker?
Brenda?
McCoy?
Brenda.
All right, and with that, congratulations, Brenda. You are the new Vice President. And with that, I'd look for a motion to adjourn the special board meeting.
Slow moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we'll see everyone back at 6 o'clock. Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us for our January board work session. I'd like to call the meeting to order and begin with roll call. Beth, if you could help us with that, please.
Good evening. Smith?
Here.
Warren?
Here.
Brandon Hugel?
Here.
Sit Nakow?
Here.
Becker?
Here.
McCoy?
Here.
All right, all six board members are present. We are also joined by Superintendent Steve Merly along with members of his cabinet. We're also pleased to be joined by two members, two members of the inner-city Student Council, President Noah Becker from West High School, as well as Sarah Gomez from East High School. So Noah and Sarah, thank you so much for joining us tonight. With that being said, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the open forum. We have, I believe, 16 people who have registered to speak at tonight's meeting. So just as a reminder to everyone, we will go through the calls in the order in which they were received. If you're waiting for a call, you'll receive a call from an out-of-state number. Because of the Zoom platform that we're using, if we miss you or you don't pick up, we'll try back on the other time around. Josh will take us through that process. And then also just want to remind people that due to state statutes, we aren't able to respond or discuss items that aren't posted on our agenda, and so we won't be able to speak to anything that the that is brought up tonight. So just wanted to clarify that. And with that said, I believe, Stacy, are you there?
Yes.
Great. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. If you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, and then you have five minutes to speak to the board.
All right. Perfect. My name is Stacy Reed. I live at 1016 Neville Avenue in Green Bay, and I'm going to hand the phone over to my daughter. Good evening, Superintendent Merly, school board members and community. My name is Meadow Reed. I am a third grader at Almore Elementary. I'm speaking to you today to open my elementary school to face-to-face learning. I would describe this year as sad. I miss talking with my friends. There, there is no, there are no breaks to talk. I'm, I, I am missing an opportunity to help other speech therapy students as I am graduated from my speech therapy in October of last year. I am excited to go back to school to see my friends and school family. Virtual is hard to learn certain subjects, and as some things are better taught in person, it is hard to see other students' reactions online. I have noticed my friends seem sadder not being together. Please bring us all back together. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for sharing that with us. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Have a good night.
You too.
All right, I think we're done, Josh. Debbie, are you there? Can you hear me, Debbie?
Yes, I can hear you.
All right. Thank you very much for taking the time to call tonight. If you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, and then you have five minutes.
My name is Debbie. I live at 914 Day Street in Green Bay. I have a few questions for the school board. You changed it to the teacher needs to be vaccinated before our children returns to school. Have you even surveyed the teachers to see if they feel they need to be vaccinated before they can teach in person? Every teacher I have talked to is just as anxious as the kids to get back to in-person teaching. They don't like virtual either. Do you even bother reading the emails coming from parents and children? My daughter asked to write in, and being a freshman, I felt it was her right to express her feelings. One guess on how many of you bothered to respond to her? One of you thought it was important enough for her to know she was heard and make it easier to fight for her. Thank you, Rhonda, for actually caring about our students' body and how they are feeling and what this is causing. We have seen signs of more kids struggling and failing with virtual learning. Appleton realizes now with allowing in-person, they have to bridge a gap that virtual learning caused. Your solution? Let get, let, let them get a pass grade so they don't fail. So let us envision what that will mean in a few years. College gets two applicants. One is allowed to be in-person in school their freshman year. They get an A. The other kid was attending school virtually, but there is really no way for them to know this, and that kid got a pass. Which one do you think will get into that college? We see depression and anxiety, which is always possible, and our teens are on the rise and also reaching lower grades. What you're doing is causing damage to our children that could last years. Can the parents send you the bill? Will you pay to support those kids that may have years upon years of counseling needed from your decision? The board policies included Policy 110, the mission, and Policy 150, Board Power and Duties, points out how the duty of the board is to serve the students of the district. You are failing miserly, meeting the needs of the students. When will their lives matter to you? Did you ever think we'd have a time that kids would be asking to be in school? Are you listening? They are pounding at that door, pleading to be let in, saying they want to learn. Will you open the doors? Or will you keep them closed in their face? Do you hear that? They're saying, "Let me in. I want to learn." You can't learn virtually. I am struggling. I need to be at school. Kids are begging to be let in. When will you guys listen? When will you hear their cries? Thank you. Bye.
Thanks for calling, Debbie. We appreciate it. Scott, can you hear me?
I can.
All right, if you could start, introduce yourself and give us your address, and then you have five minutes.
All right, thank you. My name is Scott Hanson. I live at 2050 Sandalwood Court in Green Bay, and I'm the mother of a junior who hasn't been at Southwest High School for nearly a year. So good evening and thanks for my, taking my comments this time. I think the previous caller covered a lot of them, but I specifically asked to speak at this board meeting in strong support of upholding your mission and your board policies of the Green Bay area public school system. I'm impressed with how inspiring the mission is and how clearly the board policies support delivering on that mission. I just wanted to take some time to recognize how important those must be for you. It must be satisfying to know that you have a very clear compass to guide your decisions. To educate all students to be college, career, and community-ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world, it's a, it's a very inspiring mission. And then there's the way the policies support that, clearly stating that the board will strive to meet leadership standards, including the phrases, "to place the highest priority on students and public education", "to focus on meeting the needs of all students", "using the district's mission to guide all your deliberations, decisions, and actions". There are many more meaningful descriptions of how to implement the mission, and nearly all of them speak towards putting the needs of the students as the top priority. You are failing. You're not delivering on what you were elected to do. You're not properly considering or discussing the educational results of the students of Green Bay. The one comment I've heard about results in the hours of board meetings I've listened to was in the early December meeting, and it led me to believe that students were failing substantially more this year than last. I've heard minimal follow-up on details on that, and it would seem pertinent to delivering on your mission. Every week, the school district sends you a COVID report on the status of cases in the community and cases in the employees of the school district. Wherein that weekly report is there anything about the performance of students? That is a shocking omission. You are not considering the mission or your policies on how to deliver it. There are far too many hours of board deliberations about public health policy which you are not chartered to deliver. There are agencies throughout the country whose responsibilities include public health, the County Health Department, or the CDC. They've not directed schools to close. They've provided recommendations for how to open safely, and they put statements on websites like the opening line about schools from the CDC's webpage. It is critical for schools to open as safely and as quickly as possible for in-person learning, not when it's safe, but as safely as possible. I've also listened to too many hours deliberating about the employees of the Green Bay School District and what's best for them. They're not students. That is not your mission. Your mission is to deliver for results for our students. You have a mission and you have board policies all intended to help guide your decision-making. Those clearly put the performance of students at the top of your consideration, but you don't. Where is the data on student performance this year versus last? Where are the subsequent deliberations about how to turn the performance around for the students? If it were shared, I am certain that the data would show that the current method of education is performing worse than standard in-person learning. It is doing real harm to the children in Green Bay School District. For the sake of the students, being college, career, and community-ready, perform your role as elected members of the school board. Be the voice for the kids, too many of whom are failing. Talk about what is best for the educational results of the kids, and for the sake of those kids, get them back in school. Thank you for your time.
Scott, thank you for sharing your comments with us. We appreciate it.
This one's taken a while to rank through, Eric. We may need to come back to this one. Sorry. Oh, there we go. We will come back to number four, moving on to number five. Okay, that one also failed to get through. We'll come back to that one. We'll be on to number six.
Jan, can you hear me?
Hello?
Hi, Jan. Thank you for joining us.
Hi, um, my name is Jan Larson, and I am a parent of three children to our school age. I guess I'm calling in, I meant to write something up and didn't, but I guess I'm calling in because the mental health of my kids has really been challenged with all of this. They are not... They, I have a kindergartner and a second grader, and my kindergartner has no idea what school is. And it's, it's devastating as a parent for her to not have, not have a clue as to what's going on. For, as far as their actual schooling goes, yeah, they're, they're doing okay. My kindergartner is not doing quite as well as her sister did at this point in the year. But, I, you know, I, I think that that's for everyone. But mentally, this has taken a toll on not only them, but our whole family. It put the strain on their relationship with each other. And it's, it's sad to see that. It's really sad. Sad to see that the, the strain on, on a sister relationship is, is not what it could be. You know, I, I understand that the board would like to have, um, you know, the vaccine be part of the, the criteria for the teachers to go back, but there's quite a large number of doctors that are not taking this and nurses, and and I don't think that a choice that, I, that shouldn't be, that shouldn't, again, that shouldn't be a choice for the school board to make. That should be a choice for the, for the individual teachers to make and not, not the school board. So I think we take care, just get, get our kids back in school. That's where they learn the best. That's where they get the social aspect the best. And that's, that's where they need to be. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for calling, Jan. We appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Jan, can you hear me?
Yep, I'm here.
All right, thank you. If you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, and then you have five minutes.
Uh, yeah. Hi, uh, my name is Tim Schatz. I live at 4651 Point Comfort Lane in Green Bay. And I, I have something prepared here. You've all seen it already, but I don't know that you've actually read it, or maybe you just need me to say it out loud to hear it clearly, but my wife and I have four kids, a two-year-old girl and three boys, ages 14, 15, and 18. Our daughter has been in full daycare since July of 2020, and there are three Preble boys that have been forced to accept virtual learning since March of last year. My household, which consists, the two, two of the three boys, is split between two very loving and nurturing families. Both families involved are extremely frustrated with the board and the superintendent. Our daughter is two. She's been in daycare, like I said, since July of 2020. Her classmates aren't required to wear masks, but her teachers do, as well as all the staff. Older kids are required to wear a mask during the day. She was out of daycare from March until June. She went back and got a cold within the first two days, not COVID, as she was tested at a doctor's office. She was holed up at home and wasn't exposed to any other common bacteria. So naturally, when re-exposed, she caught a small cold. It's what kids do. They need to be exposed to bacteria to keep their immune system active. I fully realize there are others out there that are immunocompromised. They need to do what's best for them. Our 18-year-old boy is a senior at Preble. He's a standout athlete in soccer and track. His grades have always been in the A or B range. He's a great kid with a great head on his, on his shoulders, maintains a full-time job in the summer and part-time during school. This year has been a major setback. He doesn't have much interest in sports, as soccer wasn't played at Preble this fall. He doesn't get to experience the opportunity to be, of being a senior at his high school with all his friends. It's a milestone for any young man or woman that has been taken away. His grades are suffering. He'd rather just be done with school and work. But when asked if he'd like to go back to in-person school, he says a resounding yes. The same answer as every single one of his friends does when I see them. Our 15-year-old boy is a sophomore at Preble. He's also a tremendous soccer player. His grades have been in the B or C range. He's an extremely lovable, fun-loving, and emotional kid, and very much likes to be with his friends. This year has been a major setback for him. His attitude is, "Why do I do my homework if it isn't graded and doesn't count towards my grade?" He's currently barely passing. We are seeing a psychologist for his ADHD, and now depression. I'm gonna say that again. He's been seeing a psychologist for depression, and I hear that from a trained medical provider, and it scares the crap out of me. And it should everybody there, too. When asked if he'd like to go back to in-person school, he says a resounding yes. The same answer as every single one of his friends does when I see them. Our 14-year-old boy is a freshman at Preble. He's a genius in our book. He's a two-time Wisconsin state champion for Chinese speaking. He, have you ever tried to help a child study Chinese? He's a gifted, straight-A student and came from Leonardo da Vinci, where he had been since the second grade. Before the pandemic, he was a huge helper with our daughter, always helped her on the house without issue, liked to go for runs, do drone photography, and was pretty outgoing, outgoing. He was already talking about going to Purdue University and get a jet propulsion engineering degree and work at SpaceX. I don't know many teenagers that have a career mapped out since the seventh grade. But thanks to you, virtual school has taught him to do as little as possible for school and in work late, sometimes since the beginning of school, and get full credit, get bad grades, he was failing two classes, and disappear to his room and be on his computer for hours on end. He no longer wants to attend college because he believes all learning for anything can be done online. He chooses not to want to learn now because there are too many interruptions, and some teachers aren't challenging him at all. When asked if he'd like to go back to in-person school, he says yes. Same answer as every single one of his friends. All kids need to be able to come back to school in person. I'm sure you have sent countless studies, or have seen, been sent countless studies, articles, statements from people that are much smarter than any of us, saying that schools need to be opened. Your proposed plan of seventh, eighth, tenth, and eleventh, and 12 graders in school doesn't make sense, and the gating criteria, criteria is unattainable and unrealistic. The majority of your customers want their kids back in school. Those who don't want to go back can stay virtual. Those are the two choices.
Tim, Tim, I apologize.
All the information that you need to move forward. What?
We're at the end of the five minutes. If you just want to wrap up your thought, I'll, I'll give you a minute to finish, or just a few seconds, but...
Okay. Right now, you guys are last in the county, the last board to offer a solution, the last school board to meet the needs of your students. The longer you wait to act, the wider the gap in learning. Your students are falling to the bottom. The only advantage of being last is you don't need to reinvent the wheel. You no longer need to create a solution, just copy your neighbors. West DePere, DePere, Schwaber, Howard Swamaco, Notre Dame, Luxembourg, Wrightstown, Seymour, Kimberly, Appleton, Meredith.
Sam, I hate, I hate to cut you off, but we, we gave you five minutes, and I tried to give you some leeway, but we gotta get to everybody else that's waiting. So thank you for calling.
Thanks for, thanks for hearing me.
Yep, appreciate it.
Bye.
Eric, I did try to go back and reach caller four. I was not successful. I'm trying five again right now.
Okay.
It does not appear that was successful. I'm going to move on to number eight. Yeah, one didn't work either. Um, moving on to number nine. Here we go.
Kendall, can you hear me?
Yeah, hi.
Thank you very much for calling. If you could, uh, start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, and then you have five minutes.
Uh, my name is Kendall Troop, and I live at four-two-one St. Mary's Boulevard. And I am the Southwest High School Student Body President. So today I'm here to talk to you guys, leader to leader. And I'd just like to start off by saying how ashamed I am to call you guys our school board. After listening to the last few board meetings, oh, I only feel that one of you is speaking for the interests of these kids. The rest of you may say you are, but you're not. Do you know how many of my classmates and friends are suffering because of your biased decisions? Do you know how many of them are struggling with countless mental illnesses that could ruin them for the rest of their lives? But that's the thing. You guys do know. You have parents here every meeting telling you. You just don't care. And don't try to deny that, because if you truly cared about the students you're responsible for, you would not be waiting to see how other schools handle this. You'd be at the front line trying to help the kids you're responsible for to get back to real learning instead of setting them up for failure. And all that solution has to start with is setting an actual date to return to school instead of waiting for the vaccine to be distributed to non-high-risk teachers. You spend a majority of your time on these meetings talking about minor details, like what is, what happens if the lunch lady gets sick? And the administration has answered these questions with their plans and strategies. Yet you continue not to listen to the plans they have been, have in place and force those of us who want in-person learning to remain at home. COVID is a real threat. I understand the need to protect our staff. But why does everyone my age and all of our parents have to go do our jobs in person while the teachers sit behind a screen? This solution of online school is no more beneficial for these teachers. I have heard almost every one of my teachers wish to be back in person, have them talk about how hard online teaching is for them. They are genuinely struggling with engagement and teaching. I had a class where only two of us showed up on a consistent basis. And it's not these teachers' fault. It's yours. People who cannot agree on even a basic motion that will give these students some normalcy. The rest of this country and our entire area has shown that there's clearly a safe way to go back to school. So why can't you? Are you guys incapable? Because I don't think that's the case. You just simply don't want to because it is in your best interest for teachers to stay home. So thanks for setting my senior year up for failure. This may not have been a pivotal year for you, but for me, it was meant to be one of the best years of my life. And you guys have taken that away from me and every other student in the district that you claim to have the best interests of. I can name countless people that I personally know who have left this district in search of another school. And I know for a fact that if I was not in the final stretch of my senior year, I'd be right there beside them. But, that being said, I consider myself lucky to be a senior right now. At least, I'm not one of the thousands of students below me who will be impacted for years to come by your inability to come up with a solution to a problem that you've had nearly a year to solve. At least I can move on, go to college, and make a life for myself above petty school politics with leaders who put their own best interests over thousands of children. Thank you.
Thank you for calling, Kendall. We appreciate it. Melissa, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
All right, if you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, and then you have five minutes.
Sure, my name's Melissa Stitz. My address is three-four-eight-seven Bay Highlands Drive in Green Bay. Um, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak this evening. Um, I, I really wanted to spend time this evening speaking. I know I've called in on other, other meetings as well. But I think it's important that, um, it's important that we continue to be transparent with information. And I just want to point out an email that I received from Governor Evers um, on January twenty-first that I had sent to everybody within the school board, including the superintendent. And one of the points that I think it's critical for us to continue to, to look at and consider is what, a section that he has, third paragraph down, says, "While every family has struggled during this pandemic, expect extended school closures, which we are in right now, and we have no defined date of return, have particularly been devastating for many children of color, children living in poverty, children with special needs, and children learning English as a second language. The Department of Public Instruction has requested an increase in funding for our mental health services and an increased collaboration with districts that educate the largest majority of students experiencing these opportunity gaps." I would venture to say that Green Bay probably falls within that. And I, I think we have some missed opportunities that oftentimes, um, you know, I think we as parents have attempted to be voices for all. And that includes individuals that are not capable of speaking up for themselves. Uh, it, it's critical that we continue to look at a, a return date that is a date rather than an estimated timeline of the unknown. Particularly when we look at the fact that we have no knowledge as a district of how many teachers, how many educators, how many within the district will actually accept the vaccine. And that is their choice. There are some that will, and there are some that won't. But we don't even know if we're delaying this based on fifty percent acceptance, if it's sixty percent. In, I just don't understand how we can continue to turn our head to the kids that, once again, Governor Evers has pointed out, it's devastating. It's not just bad. It's not that they will be slow in, in development and will catch up. It's devastating. I, I think it's interesting, um, in terms of when we look at where the budget dollars have been spent or KIRIZAC dollars have been spent. Um, the fact that the dollars have been there for quite some time. But yet, much of what we've invested in has been, um, the Chromebooks, masks. It is a board. My advice to the administration would be, be transparent. Have information accessible. Put that out there so that way we can see that. I want to mention also that please understand the frustration level of, uh, parents, families with, within the community. And so I know there's conversation of people being very persistent in phone calling and, and follow-up. And at the end of the day, I think as a parent, that is, that is what we do. We, we continue to lobby for our kids and we, we help to, in those that, without a voice, we continue to lobby for those. And it's important at some point in time, we find a place that we all can move forward. I really do believe teachers throughout this entire thing have worked hard to do the very best that they can. And, you know, it's, it's interesting because more and more are beginning to find, um, their voice publicly than they're speaking out. And I just want to read, the last part is from an educator. Um, and it, it says, "The hardest part of virtual learning from the teacher's side is being completely helpless to students and families that are struggling through virtual learning. It's heartbreaking to watch my four- and five-year-old students cry and beg that we don't have another live day. It's heartwarming to hear them say, 'We love you,' and they enjoy your, the activities. This year is long, never-ending. I want to see my kids in person." And this is from an educator. This is not me saying it. This is an educator saying it. We need for the board, we need for Superintendent Merly, we need to be able to come together and find some solutions to get our students back sooner. With a deadline for planning purposes, so that way that there is an end in sight. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for calling, Melissa. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay.
Joe, can you hear me?
Uh, my, this is Valerie. I'm gonna be speaking for Joe tonight. He has a dental procedure today, and his wife.
All right, no problem. Um, thank you for calling. If you could introduce yourself and, uh, give us your address, and then you'll have five minutes.
Sure, and I certainly represent both of our views, just that, uh, he kinda took the reins and I took over from there. My name is Valerie Spearing. We live at eight-two-zero Allee Terrace in Green Bay. This is a plea for reopening Green Bay schools. Let's consider the children's well-being. Kids are suffering in many ways by not being in school. They aren't getting the best academic experience. Kids can so easily tune out of their virtual classroom. If they are not engaged in the lesson, what is stopping them from going to another tab and playing a game or surfing the web? Students are still visible to the teacher, but they may not be present. This isn't the teacher's fault, but it's a temptation for our kids every day. We parents get an email about it later in the day, but the learning opportunity has passed. New learning suffers. Not everyone learns best sitting in front of a screen without their learning community physically around them. Specials, classes, and hands-on lessons are vital. How can band and orchestra members play together, or theater students learn acting? Virtual learning just cannot compare to the experiential learning our kids get at school. The children are suffering psychologically by missing out on the usual interactions between students, like developing friendships, going on field trips, small and large group projects, and even bullying and teasing. All of these teach kids life skills that they need to contribute to society and work with others every day. Siblings need to be able to have a break from each other to learn among and from their peers. Many older students find themselves responsible for monitoring their younger siblings' online usage while parents work or sleep or tend to their younger brothers and sisters. How many of you board members are healthier sitting in front of a screen all day? How is your posture? Anyone getting eyes strain or headaches, having crying fits? Our children have to move their bodies to get the wiggles out and to be healthy, period. Fayed, recess, or even walking to the teacher's desk to hand in an assignment can't compare at home. Can't have a kickball game in the gym or enjoy a climb on the playground after lunch. An emotionless computer or tablet screen is no substitution for an in-person teacher, classmate, or even a short conversation and passing with the janitor. While picking up or dropping off of some Larkin at school last year, I noticed he'd exchanged a special greeting with one of the student teachers. When I asked him about it, he said, "Seth Carlos, we count how many times we see each other in a day. This is the first time, so we held up one. By the end of the day, it might be three or four." Now how on earth could Carlos make a simple and special connection like that if he and Larkin didn't pass one another in school throughout the day? School is a safe haven full of trusted adults who make themselves available to kids in cases of frustration and despair. It is a source of routine, consistency, and normalcy in their lives. Teachers and school staff can tune in to kids and can speak with them discreetly if a student is having an off day. They can't get the same sense of kids' well-being virtually. Social learning is an important part of being in school. The kids need real interactions with adults and kids as part of a school community during these most important years of their lives. We humans thrive on the input of others to build our worldview through shared experiences. The children need the presence of others around them to help cue a change in activities or even to wholeheartedly participate in a real-time conversation, have a teacher give feedback, or students ask questions on the spot, not because a link was opened or they've composed an email. Penmanship, two-hand typing, making music, creating art, delivering a speech, learning a foreign language, deserve in-person teacher and learner. As an overnight truck driver, my husband must supervise our nine- and twelve-year-old kids during school. He can sometimes sleep for an hour or two before the school day starts. I feed the boys their breakfast and get them logged on before I go to my part-time job. We have alarms set for the classes on an older tablet. It goes off twenty times throughout the day for our fourth and seventh graders. My husband serves our kids lunch that he picks up from school and also delivers four more lunches to a family who can't leave home to pick them up. They have younger learners, one parent sleeping who works third shift, and another parent working at home. After I get home at one, my husband goes straight to bed to be ready for his ten-hour overnight shift. Mine and the boy's evenings are usually spent catching up on missed and incomplete assignments and answering emails from teachers about class absence or missed meetings. This has repeated since spring break of last year. Since our kids have been learning from home, we are tired. We're frustrated. Our patience has been. My husband is not as healthy as he was a year ago. The added stress of virtual learning costs him sleep and our kids the opportunity to be among familiar adults and classmates, learning so much more than they can in this current setup. Change needs to happen, not only for families like ours, but especially for the single working fathers and mothers who may not have the advantage of tagging their spouse in when they're feeling overwhelmed. While we are seeing other districts in our area open for class in varying degrees, we are not seeing the intentional movement of the Green Bay School Board's decision toward this end. We're calling on this board, the former Director of Education, and our current governor to expedite the return of our children to their classrooms. Thank you so much.
Thank you for calling and sharing your story with us, Valerie. We appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I'm sorry for all the dead air tonight. I'm trying to keep on top of this.
No worries, Josh.
All right, number twelve was unsuccessful. We'll come back. I'm moving on to number thirteen, and then maybe we'll go back through in order of, of the ones that we weren't able to get through to.
Sounds good. We've had eight calls so far, so we have eight others that are registered.
Okay, let's number thirteen come out, hopefully.
Bruce, can you hear me?
I can.
Thank you so much for taking the time to call us tonight. If you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, and then you have five minutes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, my name is Bruce Orlakowski. I live at five-four-three Delwich Road. Calling in today because I'm very worried about my son and the rest of the kids. This isolation has been hard on him. He is in first grade and struggles with ADHD combined. His personality has changed since the beginning of last year and this year. He, he is more defiant towards me. He's talking back more. Just his attitude just switched. The amount of frustration that has been building up is overwhelming in our house. It's becoming a problem. You know the person who learns best in person. He tells me that he wants to go back and see his friends almost every day. The games that have been playing about beating around the bush and with all the unanswered questions is getting very old. Our community has spoken, "We want our kids back." There's no reason we cannot start some, start, um, sending the kids back before the vaccine. There's been schools that have been going back for multiple weeks now that the teachers don't have vaccinations yet. Your community has spoken and pleaded. Start stepping up to the plate to what you voted in for. Have courage. Stop stalling. You, you have state reps calling you guys out. Our community kids need this now, not a month or two from now, but now. It's pathetic that we had to change the grading criteria and graduation criteria so it hides the fact that our students are failing. Please reconsider the start date. Our kids need this more than ever. The more time we wait, the more a second pandemic arises, not because of a virus, but because of mental health issues. Thank you.
Bruce, thank you very much for calling. Bruce, thank you very much for calling. David, can you hear me?
I can.
Alright, if you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, and then you have five minutes.
Greetings, everybody. My name is Eric Vandenhuvel. I'm the president of the school. No, I'm just joking. My name is David Wilson, and uh, we live in Alaway on West Lane Joseph Street. And I just wanted to commend you all for, first of all, taking the courage to become a board member and sit in those seats and really make decisions that impact the community at large. And I don't want to hypnotize you with a bunch of hyperbole or rhetoric or anything like that. I just want to ask that you consider, you know, a few, few thoughts that I've had throughout this time as we've been uh, in Green Bay for a little over a year. And we have two small kids who uh, attend Green Bay area public schools who have been transitioning into the virtual setting. So, and asking that you all to consider the perspective of other people, meaning the those of us who may not feel as comfortable calling into the board meeting, emailing. A reference was made in the calls today mentioning uh, people of color, people that live in poverty, um, uh, English language learners. Uh, as I recall, I haven't heard many people uh, speaking on behalf from that perspective. Uh, myself as a person of color, I, I can't even speak for every person of color. Uh, but I, I've heard mention that, you know, our, our communities have been ravaged by this disease and rightfully so, as the science says. But again, if, if we don't live those experiences, I'd be careful, you know, speaking from those perspectives. But as board members, I would encourage you to, you know, seek other people that don't look like you or sound like you and, and get their perspective versus the voices in the community that obviously speak the loudest. Sure, we, we would like our kids to be in, in, um, in person as well. However, we want our kids to be in person when it's safe. And, and because the, 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 I think the criteria hasn't been met for it to be considered safe, we're, we're choosing to keep our kids virtually. Sure, it's, it's a challenge. It's a challenge for parents. It's a challenge for our kids. Uh, I'm sure it's a challenge for their teachers, and I'd like to give their teachers a shout out because they've been doing an excellent job at, you know, making sure that our kids have everything that they need. And I'm not saying that it hasn't been a, a challenge for all the other people who have called with, you know, heart-wrenching stories. But again, we as parents and adults in the community have to take accountability for raising our kids. And I think for quite some time, it's, it's been um, school and educators have been taken for granted. And this time has made everyone slow down. So again, I just want you to consider the pers- perspective of others. And for those who uh, are against struggling and, and are overwhelmed, uh, uh, I, I can't, I can't speak on, you know, this, this, this struggles that you're having, but I, I do want to affirm your feelings and know that I think that you board members are doing a good job at considering them because they speak the loudest. But again, consider the perspectives of people that aren't as comfortable calling in or English language learners or those of, those who uh, represent a, a protected class. And, you know, uh, Superintendent Murley, I, again, I know this, making the best out of a, a impossible situation is what you're brought here to do uh, with the support of your board. But again, I just ask that we just continue to consider the perspectives of those who may not have a voice in this matter. So thank you for the time and enjoy your evening.
Thank you for calling, David. We appreciate you.
Good night.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Alright, uh, if you, uh, we can just pick up a little bit of feedback from your computer in the background.
Oh, oh, sorry about that.
No, that's okay. Alright, if you could uh, introduce yourself and give us your address, and then you have five minutes.
Thank you. My name is Beth Lane. I'm at eighteen forty-one Seventh Street in Green Bay. And I just want to start by saying that I do not fault the board for struggling to make a decision on this issue. You have not received any help, help from the Health Department despite reaching out numerous times. You've received very few, if any, concrete details about a reopening plan from the district. And I want to know, where is the plan? Every single question that the board asked of the administration at the last meeting was just passed around the table until finally somebody would say that they weren't comfortable confirming anything. And yet, we as parents are supposed to feel comfortable sending our kids back to school. Despite all of the comments about all the other schools are open, so we should be too. Forty-nine percent of schools in the country have been virtual this entire school year. Our district is not alone in this decision. Yes, there are kids struggling and we absolutely should help them. But should we be doing it at the cost of disrupting the education of every student in the district? New teachers, new classmates, new curriculum this far into the school year does not seem like a solution. It will only cause more problems. There are just too many unanswered questions and too many variables for the district to just open doors to students and figure it out as they go along. I challenge the members of the administration and attendance at this meeting tonight to stop passing the buck, make a plan, be transparent with the families in this district, and if you cannot honestly guarantee the health and safety of the students, then the board should really reconsider their decision. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you for calling in, Beth. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Yep, you too. Hi Denise, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Alright, if you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, and then you have five minutes.
Okay, hi. Uh, my name is Denise Seibert. I live at eight eight three Elmore Street here in Green Bay, Wisconsin. I wanted to first thank you all for the hard work and tireless hours spent reading emails, taking phone calls, going over data and engaging in community discussion in regards to the last ten months of virtual learning. Your efforts to mitigate this crisis for our families has not gone unnoticed. I want to focus on two topics. Dispers- dispersal and usage of the CARES Act money we received to aid our district in regards to mental health as well as in-person learning for children with disabilities. Seven point nine million dollars in CARES money was made available to our district to offset expenses related to COVID with a portion of the money going to private schools. The district has pulled approximately seven hundred and ten thousand dollars from DPI for both public and private schools with, if I'm reading this correctly, six hundred and forty thousand dollars of that money being spent on professional development. During the last board week, during the last week's board meeting, it was mentioned that the CARES funding can be used to hire mental health professionals for the district to help the students navigate our quote-unquote new normal. An avenue that our district has spent zero dollars on. I find this astonishing as I continually hear from board members during meetings that the mental health and well-being of our students are a priority as many students are feeling hopeless, depressed, alone, and have given up on virtual learning. Many parents have called in saying the waitlist for counselors and therapists in the area is a mo- is almost a year long. Yet we have a crisis right now. I would ask the board to please investigate why we have not jumped at the opportunity right in front of us to hire individuals to help our students and families. I'd like to next focus on in-person learning for students with special, with students with disabilities. My son, eleven, who suffers from fragile X syndrome, is severe autism spectrum disorder, was welcomed back for round two of full in-person learning just last week, January nineteenth. We had previously been in a one percent margin of students welcomed back September of twenty twenty for half-day in-person learning, which sadly only lasted until October first due to burden rates of the community. My son was welcomed back for in-person learning because he has an IEP because the therapy is required to be in-person as well as the increased need for one-on-one direct support of which I have been providing myself since March of twenty twenty. I'm sure many parents in my shoes can relate to being the occupational therapist, the physical therapist, and speech therapist support with some to little success. My experience with virtual learning showed me one thing, that spec ed students need to be in school. Safe, which is something I'm sure a lot of families know about by now, is not able to be met virtually for these children. Most of the children could not fully engage in virtual platforms with full, without full direct support, which isn't always happening. My son, for example, wasn't able to put down a tablet for more than five minutes at a time to focus on the task at hand without endless prompts because home is not for, is for downtime and home is not for school and mom is not a teacher. I'd also like to point out that a percentage of children currently back for in-person because of faith, their IEP, and other factors are unable to wear masks. I would like the board to also consider that the time in school is possibly the only services that some spec ed students have been offered in almost a year because most outside service providers have been close to them due to COVID and being short-staffed. Combating the educational regression, social deprivation, and lack of ability to offer any sort of in-person therapy solution for these children needs to come to an end. This margin of children deserves a chance to learn safely. I believe some families, if and when the cohorts model is introduced with the provisions made during January eighteenth meeting, would likely switch back up to a virtual model for the safety of their children. The district has offered to try to maintain the same teacher for both, but the reality is that this is most likely not going to happen. If I were to pull my child, for example, we would have to start over with a new teacher over halfway into his last year in elementary school to transition to a teacher who we don't know with kids who we don't know, a case of curriculum we are unfamiliar to, only to uproot again at the end of this year to make a big full transition into a brand-new climate where he will spend the next six-plus months adjusting. I feel I'm being asked what I would rather have, the continued health and safety of my child and his well-being or his education. As a parent of a special needs child who has to make very difficult decisions all of my son's life, I don't feel I should be put in this position, especially when the services are currently being offered to us. It is unfair to continually uproot these kids. I'm asking for the students who cannot act for themselves, like my son, who is mostly non-verbal. I am asking for the health and safety of onsite staff and direct support staff to please consider them in the decisions you make. I cannot thank my son's teachers, the pairs, and the therapists enough for working so hard to find avenues to teach and help these children thrive where there was nothing for them. Each of them deserves an insurmountable amount of praise. Thank you for your consideration and continued hard work and dedication to create safe environments for our children. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much for sharing your comments with us tonight. Tonight, Denise, we appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Eric.
Alright, Eric, I'm gonna run back through the four we weren't able to get ahold of um, in order then. So we're back to number four now.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, it was unsuccessful there. Moving on to number five. Here we go.
Hi, Jess. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you so much for calling us tonight. Uh, if you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, and then you have five minutes.
Okay, my name is Jessica Lack. My address is two two three four Mahone Court. Okay, let me, sorry, I was a little unprepared. Um, so I wrote this letter into the school board and emailed it. Um, so I'm gonna read it to you guys. It says, "Children are our world's most valuable resource." "It is the best hope for our future." That quote is from John F. Kennedy. Think about the quote from JFK. Please tell me what part is not true. People are so quick to point the finger at others and say, "You're wrong. It's your fault." Do you point the finger at yourself and say, "I was wrong. This is my fault"? Everyone has skeletons in their closets that we do not want them come out. If you do not, then you are living a very boring life. If you say, "I am an open book and have nothing to hide," we both know that that's a lie. With working at a gas station, I hear a lot from parents saying the same as I am. Our kids are struggling. As a parent, I feel helpless because all we want to do is protect our children and guide them in the right direction. Please tell me how I can do this. I can talk to them till I'm blue in the face, but my kids are smarter than we all give them credit for. They look at the world differently than adults do. As we grow up, we lose something, how we saw the world as a kid. Things are black and white to a child, and they don't understand gray. As we grow up, we see more gray areas than black and white. And it can be very confusing and frustrating. Kids also ask questions to gain knowledge. What the, what? The school board is doing is black and white. The numbers are saying this or that. Um, well, let me ask you what your name is, or should I ask you what your number is? Some of the board members is about numbers. I'm sorry, my name is Jessica. I was not assigned a number. With computers, there are, they use binary. The definition of binary, binary is numeric system that only use two di- digits, zeros and ones. A single binary digit can only represent true, one, or false, zero. You say that the data was, the data research says this or that. Where did you get that data from? Numbers. The numbers have how many? I apologize. Numbers. The numbers of how many of this or that is compiled to complete the data. That is all fine and dandy, but when it comes to humans, there are so many variables. That is not exact. If you have three options in front of you and you, your choices are A, B, or C. Ten people choose A, five people choose B, one person chooses C. People make choices on feelings more than they choose on the data. If you have lived your life choosing the data and you say, "I believe that is right for you," believe is a feeling. You are not really, you are not really choosing what the data says. You are making a choice on how you feel. They, that may work for your life, but these kids are not your life. I understand that it is hard to put yourself in someone else's shoes because you cannot. Everyone's shoes fit differently. However, I want you to think, what would you do if you were in this situation? How would you handle it? Put science and data aside. How would you only feel? Would you be okay with someone dictating how you should have do things? I don't think you would be okay with that. That is what the school board is doing to our kids. I do know that a lot of parents are sending in how it affects their kids' life. I wanted to do that also. However, it looks like that's not, we're not being heard. We're not being listened to. So I'm gonna give you something to think about. Are you more concerned about your future or these kids' futures? Just a side note, these kids are your future. I would like to thank you for taking the time and the phone call.
Thank you for calling in, Jessica. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Yep, you as well.
Bye now. Bye now.
Moving on then to number eight. Looks like she's available.
Hi, Christine, can you hear us?
I can.
Thank you so much for calling. If you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, and then you have five minutes.
Okay, my name is Christine Beckman. I live at 1001 Square Terrace, and that's in 54313. Um, I believe that you all saw a video of my son, Sean, expressing to you how this change has hurt him. I also this evening asked my eighth grader to let me know, and I'll read you that in just a moment. I can. Can you hear me?
Nope.
Okay, I don't know why you couldn't before. Okay, my name is Christine Beckman and I live at 1001 Square Terrace, and that's 54313. Um, I do believe that you guys got a video from my 11th grader, Sean, and I'm not sure if you saw it or not, but he explained how these things were affecting him. Um, I was asked to speak tonight, but also to ask my eighth grader how it affected him. I'd like to tell you that in just a moment, but first I want you to know, there have been so many changes in the numbers lately. The, the World Health Organization came out and stated that the tests were too sensitive, so they're changing the media of the testing. So that leads us to believe that the, the numbers are in fact inflated. Um, the CDC has also said, "Children are not super-spreaders." And unless they have a comorbidity, they are not in high risk. They will survive. There's always an exception to the rule, unfortunately, but in general, children are not a risk factor. Um, I'm a nurse and I work with COVID patients in a nursing home. I see what happens to adults, but then I come home and I see what is happening to my children because they are missing out on their life. They're not getting to the psychosocial stages that these kids have to hit in order to move on and be successful in life. They are going to have a detriment against the other children. Or not against, but you know, they're gonna have a deficit from the other children. Those other children that are in school already, doing face-to-face learning, are going to have an advantage. They're gonna have an advantage over school, meaning extended school, college, grad school. Um, they are going to definitely have an advantage in the workforce. These are the times that our children need to be learning how to interact with people. And um, just for, I know I'm probably running out of time. I'm sorry, I'm gonna get emotional here, but when I asked my eighth grader, "Who is failing?" And I have tried everything to get him motivated. He told me he has no motivation at all, that he is severely and extremely depressed. And he said, "I often find myself sitting in my room alone with only my thoughts and I even find myself with suicidal thoughts." That is so scary to me and I don't, I don't wanna put that on your guys' shoulders, but I also don't need you to put his health on your shoulders. We have the tools, we have the money for the tools because it's sitting there not being used to get these kids in school with the proper PPE and protection. Um, the vaccinations have bumbled. In Wisconsin, the, the rollout is sad and we have no date for teachers. Even Governor Evers said the kids need to be back in school. Even President Biden said the kids need to be back in school. So my question to you all is, when are we gonna listen to the people that gave us the numbers in the first place and follow the actual science? I thank you guys so much for listening to me and considering a choice to go face-to-face or stay virtual. Thank you.
Thank you for calling and sharing your story with us, Christine. We appreciate it.
Moving back onto number 12, Eric.
One or two more, Josh?
Um, there are two people we have not been able to get ahold of, number four, number 12.
Okay.
Oh, and here she comes.
Elizabeth, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
All right, thank you very much for taking the time to call us tonight. If you'd start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, and then you have five minutes.
Yep, hi, my name is Elizabeth Darkavani. My address is 259 Boerwage Court. And I would like to put my two cents in for opening up the schools. Um, I first would like to say that, um, I feel that the schools need to be open because first it's a citywide or a nationwide pandemic. I feel that everybody is involved in this. From day one, I feel that it is everybody involved. That means that not only is it, not only should the school be shut down, but I think everybody, since we're all in this together, it should be everybody. The restaurants, the, um, the bars, everybody. The Packer Stadium and what really kills me is that the kids are the one that, that are hurting. Seeing that everybody is out and about and nobody, it's not everybody, not everybody is in this together. It's just the kids are the ones that are hurting. And um, making this that when the vaccine comes out, three weeks later, the, after the vaccine comes out, that then they're gonna open the schools. Who says that the teachers are gonna take the vaccine? And it shouldn't be managed mandatory that the teachers even have to take the vaccine. And if they don't take the vaccine, then what? We're gonna be back to square one, that we're gonna be back to virtual. So in this whole entire thing, we're back to the, the start of it. And we're gonna be back to be in virtual. So it, it, it's just like, it feels like it's just, uh, there, there's no outcome. And we need to come up with, with people, you guys are saying that you're worried about the, um, the busing. You guys are worried about the food system. First of all, the food system should be taken care of because the city is providing right now through the whole entire school year so far, the school, the city's been providing lunches. Why can't we just continue the free lunches? And when school is back in session, give the free lunches to the, to the classroom. That will take care of the food system. And then we don't have to have catered lunches and we don't have to have a lunchroom. They can just have baked lunches. And the busing system, I think parents are wanting their kids back to school so bad that we will figure out a way to get our children back to school. I think that we need to come up with, you guys need to come up with a plan that's for the children and the best interest of the children. And I don't think that anyone is doing that. I feel that it's the best interest for the children, the children's mental health. I mean, I'm on the moms group and to hear all the like sad things like about the children's mental health is just killing me. Even my own daughter is only seven years old and she's like, she's never even met, I mean, she met her teacher on virtual, but she said, "Mom, if I'm not back to school by the 100th day of school, do you think you can find me a school that's in person?" It's like, I shouldn't have to do that. It's like, come on, we're the only one. Like my friends in different states cannot believe it, our kids have never been back to school and they're in bigger school districts than we are. It's like, you guys need to come to a, a agreement on how we can get these kids safe. It's like, and you say the teachers need to be safe. Well, how is everyone else in this world safe? How are the grocery store people safe? How are the physicians going to work every day safe? Everyone in this world has to go to work and they're all safe. Like, we need to think, how is everybody else being able to go into society and they're all safe? I mean, and you need to also look at the numbers. It's not the kids that are the ones taking up these hospital beds. And they're not the ones that are spreading this disease. The people that are at risk, they can stay home and they can be virtual. They have that option. But us parents that want our kids in school, we 100% deserve to have the option to put our children in school. If that's what we feel is safest for our children, then that's what we should be able to decide on. That's it.
Thank you very much, Elizabeth. We appreciate you sharing your thoughts with us tonight.
Thank you.
Eric, there's one more we haven't been able to get ahold of. This is our fourth attempt and will we just move on if this is unsuccessful?
Yeah, we'll try this time and then we'll move on.
Thank you. Oh, here she comes.
Hi, Shannon, can you hear me?
Oh, no.
Shannon, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
All right, if you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, you have five minutes. Oh, we lost her.
We'll call her right back. Went to voicemail.
Josh, I believe we have her phone number is correct. I mean, obviously the board members do. Um, if we can't get in touch with her here tonight, board members, if you wanna reach out individually and then certainly we can invite her to call in and maybe even move her up to first in the next meeting if that, if she still wants to speak publicly. So. That's, that's what we'll do.
Right.
All right, thank you again to everyone who took the time out of their evening to call and share their thoughts and feelings with us. That's an important part of this process. All right, um, moving on, uh, on our agenda to discussion items, the first is board vacancy timeline. Um, Steve, are we going right to Melissa or do you wanna?
Uh, we can just, uh, uh, note on there, there are a couple of attachments to the agenda. Uh, one of them, uh, thank you Lori, is, uh, the posting, uh, and, uh, solicitation process that we'll use. The other one actually provides the timeline with specific actions that need to be taken. Uh, and thanks to Melissa and Beth for putting that together. Melissa's with us today and can help go over that and answer any questions you might have.
Steve, we followed the similar process that we have for the prior two vacancies in a similar timeline. As you know, state law requires the vacancy to be filled within 60 days from the date the seat became vacant. Um, the seat became vacant on Friday, January 15th, which started our 60 days. So we set out a proposed timeline, hoping those dates work for you. We haven't advertised those dates because we know that we needed your feedback to make sure that all six board members could be present for those dates. Uh, we are following the same process we have in the past with interested individuals submitting a letter of interest. There's no application, it's just simply a letter of interest for you to review. And then you'll select from their individuals to receive interviews and then invite them in for interviews. Josh has set up a system to do this virtually through Zoom and, um, all of the meetings will be open and your deliberations are required to also be an open session. So I guess my first question is, and I think what Beth needs to know too, does that, does this timeline work for you? And do these dates work? So on the second page is the posting of the vacancy would be tomorrow. The application window would be January 26th to February 8th. Uh, the deadline to provide feedback for interview positions to Beth by February 12th, I'm sorry, for interview questions to Beth by February 12th. And Beth will provide you with the interview questions we've used in the past. And then you will screen applicants on February 15th and then the interviews and selections would be on March 1st. And that fits within that 60-day window.
All right, so I would just, yeah, any questions or reaction to that? Andrew, go ahead.
Yeah, how, uh, do you count out exactly how close to the 60-day window it brings it?
I believe we have two weeks in there, a two-week wiggle room in there.
Okay, and the two weeks fall before spring break?
Correct. But, but exactly before spring break.
Okay. I guess my, my only, my only question would be, are we, are we sure we need this much time? I mean, there's no, I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying let's have a three-day posting window, but do we need two weeks? You know, do we need a full, do we need two weeks in between each of these? Although I, it's not, it seems to me like we could probably go a little bit quicker, especially when there's not, you know, as much as people's maybe outside plans to have to give advance notice of, but it's also not, if, if others think this timeline is great as it is, I'm not particularly opposed to it. I just wanted to throw it out there.
Go ahead, Rhonda.
Andrew, can you speak to the reason why you wanna push it up? Is there something that we're missing about that?
Well, I know, I just think you wanna be, I just think you wanna be back to a full seven, you know, within a reasonably soon. And this is, if this is reasonably soon for everyone else, it's also reasonably soon for me. I just wanted to see if there was any interest in, you know, exploring some of the, some of these gaps in between maybe being a, a week instead of two. But if this is, if around two weeks to send it in and then around two weeks to get to interviews, if that's good with everyone and, you know, I'm fine with that too.
Um, is it possible that we see how many we have in a week and then we make a decision? Or do we have to establish that right now?
I would think we could, I would think we could potentially be within our rights to extend, but I don't think you could cut short because someone could say, "Well, I was planning to take my full-time to prepare this."
Right.
I was thinking more of the timing, do we need the two weeks in between, in between the screening meeting and the interviewers or could that maybe be a, a week?
We, we timed this also with the dates of your board meeting. So I believe there is a board meeting that, and we tried to stick with Mondays so that you were available those dates. So there is a, a board meeting on February 22nd and then, so the, you would screen the applicants on the 15th. You have a board meeting on the 22nd and then the first is that the next Monday after that. So if you wanna not stick with Mondays, you could find meetings in the middle of the week. But usually we have had difficulties getting board members on days that aren't Mondays.
Okay, that's more than, more than enough reason to stick with that schedule is to keep things on. I've always advocated for keeping Mondays, so that, that sounds good. Thank you.
Go ahead, Brenda.
Um, well, the screening of applicants on the 15th, that'll be a board meeting also?
Correct, that will also be an open session.
Okay, and then this, then we'll determine who we're going to bring back to interview. on the fifteenth and well, who will bring, on the fifteenth, we'll decide who to interview, and then we'll interview them on the March first.
Yep, and that will give Beth time to as well to schedule them, depending on how many you're bringing back. That does take a little bit of time to get the packets together for you as well as scheduling for the interviews.
Melissa, what does the onboarding process look like? So if we select a board member on March first, is it reasonable to assume that they would be able to participate in the March eighth board meeting?
It just seemed to get down to the city clerk's office, take the oath of office before they're allowed to participate on the March eighth meeting, but that usually does not take long.
Sure. Okay, so then realistically, we would have two more meetings with six members. And then by the time we held our third meeting, somebody would be here hypothetically. Good. Thank you. Go ahead, Rhonda.
Um, just to clarify, are we going to livestream the interviews? You're required to livestream the interviews since we're still virtual. Okay, so, um, so that people are aware of that.
Yeah. All right, any other questions on the process?
Should.
Oh, go ahead, Brenda.
Should we set a timeframe for the, especially the interview meeting? Just so that people who are applying know that we're going to interview sometime between, I don't know, four and nine o'clock or something like that, or five to nine?
Well, I think it, part of that depends on how many people apply and then how many people we interview.
Right, but I'm thinking we don't, if we put March first and people think we're going to, people might think we're doing it during the day instead of an evening time. So I'm just trying to indicate to people if they're applying, you know, this is the window that that we're holding interviews and, I mean, if we have to extend or or make it earlier or later. But at least some guesstimate as to the time period of interviewing.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I think that that makes sense. Also, if we do get a lot of applicants, we don't want to be, you know, scheduling someone at eleven o'clock PM. That's, I don't think that's a fair, fair thing to give some candidates a five or a six o'clock slot and somebody else gets an eleven PM slot. So, yeah, I think we can maybe, you know, our intentions and maybe past practices that it'll be in the evening and we can note that somewhere. But I would just also put an asterisk that the number of candidates could cause some variability in that schedule.
What what would be the earliest you would be able to start on March first? Just just planning forward so that we can just line up postings? What would be the earliest to be able to start?
Well, typically, board members are asked to keep five o'clock as the the first available slot. I think, you know, we can ask everyone outside of this meeting to go back and check, could you make a four o'clock meeting that day to see if we could move it up? But with, and we don't have to decide that right now, but I would just say that five o'clock is the earliest that we can go right now. And if I could just ask everyone on the board to check your schedules and see, could you do anything earlier than that in this instance? And maybe we don't need to. Again, a lot of it is contingent on the number of candidates. So. Yeah, Rhonda?
Um, can I also point out that there will be more than likely a lot of interest in this and that we would want people to be able to tune in live if possible. So ideally, and I'm speaking for myself, I would prefer the five o'clock be the earliest time.
Okay.
If possible.
Then we have to be open to, as as board members, I think, clearing up another day, possibly Tuesday, if we need to do two days of interviews. So, oh, well, again, a lot of that is hypothetical and we won't spend time tonight. Go ahead, Andrew.
Um, I, I, I guess I want to say, you know, it, it seems to me if we have, thinking back to other ones, it seems like twelve, you know, twelve, fifteen, twenty might be a typical number. And we've brought in five, five to seven, I think, at different times. If we have an, if we have a huge turnout, if we have, I guess it doesn't necessarily have to be proportional. And I want to value the time of people who, you know, who do apply. And hopefully, you know, if if we, if we, for example, if we were bringing in twenty people for for a live interview, it it seems like we're probably certainly in that group are people who would not be likely to be selected. So I think we need to pick a good number to give us a range to interview, but not, you know, target a certain, you know, percentage, oh, we better bring in twenty because I don't think fifty will apply. But I hope we pick a reasonable, manageable number of people to have a decent interview with on that night.
So so let's do this. Beth is going to get us ready with a few different things. We'll meet back together on the fifteenth. We'll know how many have applied and how many we would like to interview. And, you know, Beth can have a sample schedule of how long, you know, to say, hey, if you want to get this all in on the first night, here's how many slots. If you want to pick more than that, then we might have to go venture away from that plan.
Eric, the the only problem with that is the posting that we have for the vacancy does indicate that interviews are on March first. So if we are going to have a second date for interviews, we would need to include that in the posting or the interviews that Lori has created.
Okay, well, then then the reality is is that Beth will create a schedule and tell us how many slots we can fill. And if we want to go later and do an eleven o'clock interview, we'll we'll make the day longer if there's, you know. So that'll just have to be the way that it is. Go ahead, Rhonda.
I like your optimism that there's going to be so many people applying. Had to throw that out there.
Thanks. All right, anything else on this process? All right. Moving on then, we'll transition to the COVID-related expenditures report. Steve, I know you'll do a brief introduction and then throw it to members of your team.
Indeed, we've got several members of the team here that will help share some context on that. I know there have been lots of questions about COVID expenditures. I know you've received a couple of different reports and presentations on this, but I appreciate the opportunity to follow up and elaborate on the information that's been previously provided. Pete and Josh are here to present, and I believe we also have Mike and Jake to help with follow-up call questions. So with that, I will turn it over to Pete and Josh.
Hey, my name's Peter Ross and I'm the chief operations officer of the school district. Josh Pachek and I will be going through COVID-related expenditures to get the board up to speed with respect to what's been going on in the district with respect to COVID and CARES Act specifically, because there have been some questions. My direct responsibilities for the school district are food service, transportation facilities, technology and finances, and I work with executive directors and directors in each of those areas. And this has been really from March last year to today. This has been an operational issue with respect to having the district prepared for serving children the best way that we can and in the safest way possible and continuing to do that on into the future during the COVID crisis, which, you know, all scientists have told us that the pandemic is not over with the vaccine and that we'll be living with this for some time. So it's our responsibility to have plans in place to serve our children and keep our employees as safe as we possibly can. I don't know, Josh, did you want to add anything?
I think you summed that up pretty well, Pete.
Okay, and then having said that, let's go on to the next slide. And I, and I want to explain to the board, and I know on my screen, I've got Windows open up with a couple of you. And then it's blocking some of the, some of the PowerPoint, but I'll, I'll get through it. Thank you, Josh, for sharing the screen. You know, this this pandemic actually started, as you all know, a year ago. And then in March of two thousand nineteen, the governor of the state of Wisconsin closed all public schools entirely. When the closure came in March, we expected it, at least I expected it to be about six weeks and we'd have kids back in school. And well, you know, history proved that I was wrong. So to begin with, in March, when we started acquiring some personal protective equipment, there wasn't CARES dollars available. There was some legislation in the federal government CARES Relief Act that 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 did get passed. Money went to the DPI from that legislation. And it was to be handled through our Title I grant, and I'll explain more of that in a further slide. But the point of the fact is, at the beginning, we were purchasing masks, sanitation equipment, sanitizing wipes, a hand sanitizer, those types of things, just with general funds. And we did that pretty much through the balance of the two thousand nineteen, the two thousand twenty school year. So you can see the items that we spent just general fund money on, not not CARES Act dollars on in two thousand nineteen, twenty, in order to be best prepared to serve students if they did come back onsite and or keep our employees safe that were onsite. And I would say, you know, running the operational departments of the district, food service, transportation, facilities, technology and finance, we've, we've been working pretty hard. And food service is a really good example. We haven't missed a day without serving our children. Currently, we're serving our children as we have since March. Of the possibility of them receiving three meals that are free of charge to any child that comes to any one of our forty, forty-five sites. So you get a breakfast, you get a lunch, you get a dinner, you get a snack, there's no charge at all. And and I have a big shout out to the food service department, Lynette Kienow, who's done a fantastic job making sure that those meals are available. And so part of what we had to purchase right out at the beginning were those personal protective equipment, gloves, masks, sanitizing equipment and supplies to keep our employees that were here onsite safe so that they could continue to serve food to our children. And and it's just been a Herculean effort from March that our community has had those meals delivered. And those students have had that opportunity. We also did put some money in mailing. At the end of the two thousand nineteen, twenty school year, there were a lot of resources that needed to be mailed directly to homes because of COVID and because of the danger associated with a lot of people coming to school and picking up those resources. We did massive mailings, we did massive printing, and then we did purchase a tremendous amount of curriculum that went right into the hands of primarily pre-K through fifth graders with respect to the purchases that we made that were COVID-related in two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty. And Josh, did you want to talk about the technology purchases?
Yeah, at the, at the end of, sure. At the end of nineteen twenty, we, we did have to, I think I explained this to the the board early on. We had to sink some money into charging cables because while we had enough Chromebooks for the most part, the challenge was that they were deployed in in carts and didn't have charging cables that could be removed so that kids could take home their Chromebooks and charge them. So that was about thirty-one thousand dollars. We also got into shipping and mailing technology as it became clear that we weren't going to have access to the kids onsite. So there were expenditures associated with that. The vast majority of the nineteen twenty, well, and frankly, the twenty twenty-one technology spend related to COVID was on hotspots. In nineteen twenty, we did another hundred forty thousand dollars worth of Kajits. And then we did a significant buy then in in twenty twenty-one as well.
So then that's a nice segue, Josh, for moving on to twenty twenty-one. We did not spend a single CARE dollar in two thousand nineteen, twenty, understanding that the needs of the pandemic would be intense in twenty twenty-one and very likely twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And so, beginning then in July, some of the protective equipment and sanitization health and supplies that we did purchase, we are using CARES dollars, although we are also using general fund dollars where general fund dollars exist. We have a, a, a good supply on hand of the personal protective equipment, sanitation equipment, and any of those supplies so that we're ready to operationalize having children in school when the school board would direct us to have children in school. Also, the, there's a, and I'll go to the first quarter CARES claim later on in the report, just very briefly, professional development was used in the end of summer before school started for our non-contracted or out-of-contract days for administrators, teachers, paraprofessionals and some clerical in order to have them trained on the various online platforms that we have and have been providing our virtual learning with those platforms. It's a Herculean effort and I come, I come to the district after retiring from another district. I've given up my retirement, really was the understanding that I'd helped the district transition between superintendents and then obviously COVID came and and kind of changed the course of what I was, what I intended to do when I came to the district. Believe me, I'd be very happy to go back into retirement. Having said that, I'm, I'm here doing the best that I can helping the district wherever I can. And one of the things is to use my financial background in, in the district so that financial decisions are best made for the district moving forward with respect to capturing the maximum amount of equalization aid and using the CARES dollars in a way that can have the best impact on children and the services that we provide. So having said that, one of the things that the CARES Act will be taking care of is community services where we do have partnerships with daycare agency or childcare agencies within the district, and we're providing scholarship and materials for students to attend during the day, especially with respect to those that are free and reduced population or children that are living in poverty. And so on the COVID claims that you're going to see, I'd be very happy to provide quarterly reports to the board with respect to those claims. I think you'll see community services as one of the items that that the district is doing. An unbelievable service to the community to help families during this very difficult time. And believe me, when I hear parents and the, the emotions that they're using to describe these days, they are unprecedented. The, the COVID crisis is a, is a global pandemic, not just a national pandemic. And we appreciate hearing the words and emotion with which you're wanting your children to be served in the best possible way. And we're, we're trying to operationalize that and we're ready to operationalize that when the board has our children back in school. Josh, I don't know if you wanted to talk about technology on this one.
I do, yes. I know it's a big number, which is probably not surprising, given the virtual modality of instruction. There are, but the, the board does need to understand some things about these expenditures that we made. So we've got kind of some one shots, right? We're talking chargers. We bought, I think, eleven hundred Chromebooks when they become, they very rarely become available, but when they come available, we try to jump in and make sure that we're refreshing our, our break fix stock because we're very worried about what we're going to see in terms of losses when those devices come back to school from our kids' houses. Power strips, webcams, you know, all of that kind of stuff. That's about three hundred sixty-five thousand out of that one point two five. The, as I mentioned, in nineteen twenty, the same is true in twenty twenty-one. The vast majority, five hundred eighty thousand was taken up with hotspots. And then also kind of these more robust hotspots that we worked with daycare providers that had inadequate internet service within their daycare provider facilities. We got them hooked up with a router that allows multiple of our students to connect to those devices so that they're able to access the internet from the daycare facilities during the day. We went from a fleet of about, well, we had a thousand hotspots prior to the pandemic. We're up to about thirty-eight hundred hotspots right now. And these are, we don't really pay for the devices. We pay for the subscription to the data. Right? So this is potentially a recurring cost if we continue to have this many hotspots in service for the district. Out of that, one point two five as well, about a quarter. Out of that one point two five as well, about a quarter million is software. So things you'd expect, you know, Zoom, talking points. We actually did like a, a really cool thing with VMware where we're allowing high school students to access computers in their computer labs from their home on their Chromebooks. That proof of concept has worked out really well here at the end of the first semester to the point where I think that, that's going to wind up saving us a few hundred thousand dollars as a district in the future. Because we can start to virtualize some of that infrastructure. We may not have to buy high-powered desktops for tech ed, business ed, art, that kind of stuff. We may be able to serve that up virtually through a Chromebook or a thin client. So the early returns on that are good. But again, with software, these are subscriptions, right? So this is a quarter million dollars of unexpected costs in software subscriptions that we will need to make a decision as a district whether we renew or not. So out of that one point two five, I just want to reiterate, we're about eight hundred and thirty thousand is currently for things that are subscribed to and would need to be renewed.
Are there any questions that board members would have at the present time to ask before we go to the next slide?
Yeah, Josh, just because the, i- if you could just in a, you, you, pretty good, but just not too much longer, but in layman's terms, a little bit more about virtualization and how that really can at a, in a cost-effective way, provide a real experience of a high-powered computer, even though someone's in a Chromebook, because that's hard to, you know, I've been involved in, you know, rolling out those deployments to customers at my workplace, but it's not, it's not intuitive if people haven't seen it. The, and I don't want them to think that we're just feeding them something about, oh yeah, the Chromebook's going to be as good. Well, in fact, I have had people with Chromebooks accessing much higher powered resources as an alternative way during COVID. So just so, just two minutes on that for the public and a little bit more of layman's terms would be great.
Absolutely. So, well, you know, I just, I just brought a Chromebook purchase to the board in the fall, right? And we get on for what? About two hundred seventy bucks, something like that. In some of the, the specialized curriculums where they really need a nice computer to do some of this work, we're talking about computers that are in like the twelve to fifteen hundred dollar range. And they sit there in labs that used by kids. A hundred percent of the time, obviously, it's not like they can take these giant computers home with them. So the way this technology works, and it just recently became really good enough to do it on the, the, the quality of Chromebook that the district provides our students. You, you have, you have your Chromebook with, which is a cheaper device, and you think about that, that high-powered computer sitting somewhere else and you're sending pictures of what would be coming up on the screen very rapidly to that Chromebook. So the experience on the Chromebook is just like you would be sitting in front of that high-powered computer. The Chromebook's not actually doing the work. All the Chromebook is doing is displaying what's on the screen. Andrew, did I explain that layman enough?
I, I think so, but I'll, I'll, I'll just,
Go ahead, I don't,
I'll just, I'll softball you a couple of more questions. I'm often the one having to, right? So, so a person might hear that and picture, okay, sure. So the kid's remoted into this great computer somewhere else and it's picturing like the, the buffering wheel and stuff, but in fact, it can, it can take a pretty, it can't take a completely dying internet connection, but it can, it can take a pretty low internet connection because it's, it's pretty efficient. And then I think the, the next thing that people might think about with like virtualization is the, you know, the too-good-to-be-true concept and why did you do this in the first place? And I think you touched on that well, that, you know, three, sure, three years ago, maybe if, maybe we would have looked at some things differently, if, if it was ready, but it's, it wasn't, it's not ready. You can't, you can't do it. So this, no, this is really a good development to hear about with the, the virtualization. And then I'm, the other thing too is where I would imagine if I'll, I'll just use computerated design drafting as a, as a, because we have that and it's one of the most computer-intensive things. So we're, are we doing cloud-based and just, just paying for you, kind of just usage time?
Uh, right now for this proof of concept, we're actually using the labs that are sitting in our schools. So,
We're remoting right in, we're, are remoting into them directly.
We're, yeah, we're using VMware to direct student clients to particular computers in particular labs.
Okay. So we have, we've already invested in the expensive machine. We have an efficient way to log directly into that machine. We're not duplicating it as a less-than experience on the Chromebook. We're really controlling that computer real time. And although anyone's internet connection might not be perfect at times, it's, it's going to be pretty good and your testing's been good.
Yes, yeah, the testing's been good.
Thank you, Josh.
You're welcome. And we, we are getting to the point right now, Andrew, where we're trying to consider, do we stand up? If, if we do a more robust version of this, do we stand up a cloud infrastructure here within our data center? Or do we move offsite into like a cloud provider like Azure or Amazon or, or something like that?
And that's a, that would be a whole, that would be a whole discussion for a fut- for a future, for a future time with pros and cons. And certainly one, you know, one interesting feature there is many places wouldn't even, wouldn't even have said the phrase, maybe we could build it in-house. So weighing the pros and cons of that. So, uh, but that, that part's for another time. I just wanted to make sure people were not picturing a, a less-than experience when we're actually, should be able to provide a good experience with the, the VMware.
It's, yeah, it's a full, full-featured experience. Thank you for pointing that out, Andrew.
All right. I saw Laura first, then Rhonda, then Brenda. Go ahead, Laura.
Josh, I just wanted to ask you, so this represents a huge investment for our district, a necessary investment, obviously. But if you can project out to a time, which I hope it's very, very soon that we, we maybe don't need all of these Chromebooks and kids are back in schools, what happens to all of them?
Well,
What will happen then?
We'll need the Chromebooks, Laura. So,
Every one of them?
Yeah, more than, more than likely, we will need the Chromebooks. What I have, what I am unsure about is the hotspots. And as I, as I tried to explain, we don't actually pay for the hotspot devices themselves. I don't know if you've, I wish I had one here, but you know, they look like little hockey puck things. You pay for the data subscription. So there will come a time, we're on a two-year contract for most of our hotspots. So that'll take us through the end of twenty twenty-two. But there will be that time of reckoning where we have to decide, has, has the school experience and instruction changed to such an extent that this is kind of standard equipment that we need to provide our students? Or is it going to go back to maybe the way it was back in February, right? Where there's not a lot of online homework required. I, I don't know how to, I don't know how to predict that, but we're positioned well if, if we do need to invest in, in more data.
Okay. And then just, so obviously this plan, again, out of necessity, has a certain amount of fluidity to it. I don't, I mean, it seems like we, you know, the, the, these things are constantly moving. But I, I wanted to just circle back, Pete, to something you said. I don't know if I heard it correctly, but you said that we are under community services, that some of that has been used, some of that money has been used as, I think you said scholarships, for parents to help them with childcare. I, I, I want to hear a little bit more about that.
Yeah. In the summer, it was brought to my attention that there would be the capability of having a, a partnership with one or more of our community providers that provide childcare in the district. And the district has had longstanding relationships with these contractors that there would be the necessity of having some additional resources to help make the programs work financially for these providers as well as for our families. And so we do provide, some of the money that's used is to provide those type of scholarships to help offset the cost of childcare services for children of free and reduced or children in poverty.
How do they, what's the process? Who does that go through? Does that go through our district or does that go through the, the providers?
It goes through the partnership that the district has established with these providers. They are also entities that partner with the district for after, before and after-school care, for example, during the school year and then summer programs that we have established with, with these providers as well.
Is there, is there availability for that currently? Or is that door shut for now?
Oh, yeah, it's ongoing right now.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Um, let's see. And then the, the last question I had was for you, Pete, as well. So I know that we have money, you know, in funds and so what is, to what extent can you legally use our move unused funds from one, our unused money from one fund to another, or is that completely impossible? Like, say there is something during this pandemic that where funds aren't being used to the extent that they normally would be. What is the possibility of taking those unused funds and using them in another way? I know there's, I know that's very legally difficult and maybe impossible. But I, I'm just wondering, you know, if, if that is something that you've done or are able to do.
Yeah. That's a really good question. Beyond the CARES money and the Governor's Educational Emergency Relief Fund as well that the district qualifies for, when those resources are tapped. And, you know, potentially it would be this year, but I, I hope that there'll be the ability for us to mitigate expenses over the course of the next school year as well. But having said that, should we run into a situation where we need general fund resources to mitigate some of these expenses? We'll, you know, ask the board for any type of fund transfer authority to do that and obviously provide you with an explanation of what we're requesting. There is a mechanism.
I, I just know because you've, you've tried to basically lift our knowledge at all, at all opportunities about how school, schools are, the reality of how schools are funded, the difficulty, the complexities, all this stuff that you, you know, and have the experience with. I just was wondering if, because we're basically have been operating in a crisis mode since March, how, you know, what are the possibilities of, 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 you know, moving those funds around? I just know that it's difficult. I know that it's sometimes impossible, but I just wanted to kind of have you talk on that a little bit.
Well, I think it's important for the community, the board and our internal community to understand that the resources of the district are vast. It's a large district. And that many of the items that we can purchase, especially one-time purchases, can be made out of general funds. The, the ones that go above and beyond that with respect to additional staffing for remediation or additional staffing due to mental health services as determined to be needed, that's something that I, I'm hopeful that we can preserve the CARES and the Gears money for those as much as we possibly can. In fact, to date, we haven't used any of the Governor's Emergency Educational Relief Funds, which I intend to fully utilize over the course of this year and next.
Thank you, Pete.
Can I go? Eric, I don't know if he needs to call in me or what?
Eric, would you like to, sorry, so you can see everyone?
No, I, I'm good. I just froze for a second. So I was gone and now I'm, go ahead, Rhonda. Sorry about that.
Um, so this wasn't my first question for, for Pete, but because you just spoke to it, I'm going to add, I guess, I'll ask that first. You mentioned preserve funds for mental health and social emotional support. Why would we preserve when we know we need that like yesterday?
Yeah, that's a really good question, Rhonda. And I, to answer that, you know, in my role in the district is to be the chief operational officer, I, I believe that I'm fulfilling that job duty to the best of my ability. When questions come up with respect to can we do this, can we do that? You know, I've been very open with the administrative team that we have resources to do those things. And so I would venture that, you know, mental health remedial services for children are all things that will be, will be coming our way and, and we do have resources to handle that.
So I just want to be, and I'm speaking for myself on this. So I did not know as a board member that we actually could use money in that capacity until the last meeting that we had and you mentioned it. So again, hearing that you are, and maybe I'm hearing it wrong, I'm hearing that it's preserved. That, that to me is a future tense context, right? Why have we not seen any proposal from the administration? And I don't know if this is the question for you or not. When we have money, we have funding, we have needs, people have been telling us for months. Is there a reason, is there something that the board can do to expedite this process now versus preserving it in the future? Because unless I'm hearing it incorrectly, the needs are great, they are urgent. And I would hope that we would respond to that accordingly. But what is your understanding of why we haven't seen any of that money? Because I, I continue to hear that it's zero, has been spent on it. What is your understanding of why we haven't moved on that at all?
I'm just, you know, if somebody else would like to answer that, that's fine.
I don't know, I don't know who that's for, but,
My understanding,
Yeah, I can, I can try to.
Okay, all right.
Just, just preliminarily, some of the speakers this week and at the last couple of meetings have mentioned that the waiting list for their child to receive services is pretty great. And that speaks to the state of Wisconsin and our lack of mental health professionals. They're just not out there. And maybe this is a good opportunity to put a plug out there for anybody that's watching is, and is interested in maybe exploring a different field. We are the worst in the country for having mental health care providers specifically for young people. We are the worst in the country. So, yep, when our parents are telling us the waitlist is quite long, they're not kidding, it is quite long. It, the, the support just isn't out there, Rhonda.
Okay. Okay. So is there anything that we can do in any capacity? Do we have the ability other than from, you know, respond to what parents are asking us, right? Because what I'm hearing is we don't have the ability to use the funds. And that's, that's, that's heartbreaking to hear that we have all of this money that we could basically take and use for mental health care. But we don't have, from what I'm hearing, we don't have the human capacity to fulfill that. So knowing that and hearing from families, the issues aren't going away. The possibilities that we do have, right? So the possibilities of more support for mental health, social emotional needs doesn't seem to be there. But I just want to remind everyone, we can go back to school next week and maybe potentially have possibilities that we don't see in the capacity of hiring more social workers. So that's, it's good to know that that's out there or that's not out there. And like you said, I hope that people are listening. Maybe they, there, there are opportunities out there that will come forward because of this. Maybe they, there, there are opportunities out there that will come forward because of this conversation. We can only hope. But again, um, we do have options. We just need to make that decision hopefully sooner than later. Uh, what is the balance of like the unused balance of the, the CARES Act funding?
Yeah, Rhonda, if I could defer if there are any other questions, we'll continue with the presentation. And I think that question will be answered.
Um, okay. So I do have another question about PPE and the sanitation health supplies. How is the district distributing this equitably throughout all of the schools? Like what is the mechanism that's being used? Because I'm hearing that some schools have more than others. Is, is that not true? Um, is there a reason if that was true, that there would be another school would have more supplies in other schools? Like what are we using to determine who gets what?
So Rhonda, is your question with respect to like face masks, for example?
Well, I mean, we, so whatever the list that the media got that the board didn't get, unfortunately, I would have loved to have had that. And I, but I did see it obviously. Uh, masks, shields, hand sanitizer, any wipes, anything. Basically whatever falls under the PPE and sanitation slash health supplies.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask either Mike Stengel or Jake Albersen if you wanna approach that question with respect how we're distributing supplies to school buildings, to bus contractors, things like that.
Thank you.
Yeah, how we've done it through facilities is that we've been distributing it on a like per student basis. Uh, we take the amount we have and then we look at percentage of the students and that's how we're. So a larger school will get more than a, a school that has fewer students.
Okay, so it's just simply on capacity of the school?
On enrollment at the school.
Enrollment, okay. I just want to make sure. Okay, I, I do have one more question and this does touch on something you mentioned. So you said sometimes we've been using general fund dollars rather than CARES money? Why would we do that?
Well, I think it's important Rhonda that the first resources that we would like to utilize in our district would be those resources within our general fund. And the purpose for that would be to spend our general fund to its, its highest and best potential. So in other words, the dollars that you spend in your general fund are aided at the, at about a 65% rate. So local taxpayers are paying about 35 cents of the bill and then the state of Wisconsin and other sources pay for about 65% of the bill. Uh, the COVID is actually like a, a, a one-to-one gift to the district in terms of its ability to spend. Uh, there's no aid associated with it, but there's no taxes collected locally to pay as well. So we would like to have those resources available for as long as we can with the understanding that the other resources generate aid for our, our district. And it's just a smart financial move to make sure that your general fund expenditures are fully utilized.
So what do you feel you're, you are saving the CARES money for?
To be used for whatever comes when we have children back in school. It'll be used for protective equipment, supplies, sanitation, as well as I'm sure extra staff remediation, uh, extra buses, mental health services as you've indicated.
Okay. And so, and the reason why I ask that, um, do you believe that we have the stock of, of the supplies and everything that we would need? If we were to go back, let's say in a week or two, let's just.
Yes.
Okay. So it's not a matter of, we would have to order and wait to receive what we needed.
Yeah, that's a really, Rhonda, you, you have an outstanding question and here's why. Uh, at the beginning of this crisis, uh, we, we had a real hard time getting supplies. Uh, we couldn't get face masks or if we did, we ordered, you know, just a hundred or 200 or 300 at a time. A district the size, you know, we can't bring kids back to school, 21,000 students or 20,000 students. We can't bring them back ordering, you know, a couple hundred face masks at a time. We need to order, you know, like a half a million, which we now can. Uh, so that's something that wasn't, uh, a, able to be done at first. And then also those materials that when we first went into the COVID crisis were very expensive. They're now a lot less expensive. They're a lot more readily available in large quantities. And the time to get those things are, are shortened now. So, you know, when we do need to replenish our supplies of masks or sanitizer or any type of sanitation equipment or chemicals, uh, we buy hand sanitizer by the drum. Uh, we can get those in a fairly quickly turnaround. So I believe we are ready.
Um, I, I'll just save, I have other questions for later. Thank you.
Hey Josh, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
My, my question was answered Eric. Thanks.
Alright, thank you. Alright, go ahead Pete. Josh, go ahead.
I, I just wanted to add Pete, working with the entire operations team, we've been ready. Uh, we, we prepared for the school year as if we were going to be opening our doors. So I just wanted to get that out there.
Um, I do, I did remember just, is there any way Pete that we would be able to have an itemized list of what we have in stock? Something that would be the board could have and the public would be able to visually take note of?
I can produce for you a list of things that we have in stockpile, if that's what you're asking. Yes.
Well, I think it's, it's nice to know. I mean, obviously there's, there are questions out there, um, even with staff. Um, whether that we have what we need, but if people can actually take a look at something and see it, you know, as, as clearly as possible, uh, that would be great.
Yeah, and I, I don't wanna, you know, knock any car manufacturer when they say this, but you can spend $60,000 on a car and you can spend $20,000 on a car and both of those cars can be great and serviceable for the next, you know, five, seven, 10 years. Uh, we're hoping to maximize the, the resources of the district to provide the best possible opportunity for our children to come back, uh, for safety for them and for staff. So we might not need the $60,000 car?
Um, I'm sorry, what?
What I'm saying is there, there are people that, you know, that we can't provide enough, uh, safety equipment for them. Uh, they would like to have their lives in a bubble and, you know, we're simply not going to be able to do that. There's not enough money. There's unlimited wants and limited resources. And we'll do the best job we can making things as safe as we possibly can.
And I, and I appreciate that. Um, but I think when you don't have any cars posted just to look at, that's actually worse than seeing the $20,000 car. So just throwing it out there.
Alright, respectfully, I'm gonna ask that we can, can move on to the second half of this presentation. So go ahead.
Alright, um, the board already has, uh, received the information with respect to the ESSER and the GEAR allocations and, and the detail that you didn't have, I want to explain tonight. Uh, and then I'll go through again the process by which the, the money is available. And so when I say ESSER, it's the Elementary Secondary Schools Emergency Relief Act, which we call CARES, because that was the congressional act with which it was passed. And then the GEAR money is the Governor's Emergency Educational Relief Fund. And I think Green Bay is one of 11 districts in the state that received, uh, additional resources to be spent in the same way, uh, that the ESSER funds are, are to be spent. So when the federal government approved the resources to go to the states, it was determined that they would go through our Title I entitlement program. So there are vast regulations that we have to adhere to and we do and we will. Uh, and so not only is there the oversight of our own school auditors uh, with respect to how these funds are spent, but there's also oversight by the Department of Public Instruction and guidance on how these funds should be spent. One of the pieces of guidance that we were given right away is that the, those public school would be sharing some of its resources with the private school. And the Department of Public Instruction came up with a, a low income enrollment allocation. So what we've done is we've taken the low income enrollment of our schools and we've taken the low income enrollment in the private schools and we've developed a percentage allocation. Uh, you see it there before you. So the $5,046,016 that was eligible for the district to claim against, um, 312,000 roughly will go to private schools and 4.73 million go to the, uh, public schools in this district. So, um, how, how it works is that the district has to first make, or a private school, has to first make a legitimate expenditure. We have to legitimize that expenditure using a grant claim form to the DPI. And then the DPI has to also agree that that was a legitimate, a legitimate expenditure before we're reimbursed. We are going to file quarterly and, and our school year starts in July. Uh, July 1 is the beginning of the school year for the financial calendar of the year. So we made a claim, um, for, uh, July, August and September. We are in the process and, and in fact, I think the DPI does have the claim. It's not processed yet. But when it is, I'll certainly inform the board. Uh, potentially at the very next meeting, uh, the second quarter claim. So I'll share with you the first quarter claim because that's a known claim. It's been approved by the DPI. And that reimbursement from the CARES money has been made. The exact same process happens with the, um, Governor's Emergency Educational Relief Fund. Uh, and it, and you see the numbers there as well. So are there any questions on how this distributed and how the district spends the money? And what the claiming process is? I'd be happy to answer any of those questions.
Go ahead Rhonda.
Um, I don't have a question about that, but I, um, is this where I can ask the question about what the unused balance is again?
I have one more slide Rhonda.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions here? Okay, um, Josh, you can go to the last slide then. And what I'll do for the board, uh, you know, without hesitation here is to produce for you each of the claims, uh, once they're approved by the DPI and the money is reimbursed. And the reason that, uh, you know, we have to go through this claiming process is that the DPI and the, the way title funds work, uh, there is oversight by the state of Wisconsin to make sure that we're spending the, the funds according to the way that they're supposed to be spent. So all of the claim that you see here with respect to the private schools and incidentally, when a private school wants to purchase something, they use our purchasing department. Uh, we purchase the item for them and then, uh, deliver it to the private school. So that's how that works. Uh, it's quite a, an administrative feat, whether it's a public school or a private school. Uh, we have to administer all of those purchases and then make those claims to the state of Wisconsin on behalf of both the private school and our schools. What you see is what we did on the very first claim, uh, for all expenses that we put on the CARES Act or the ESSER Act, uh, for, uh, for the first quarter of the year. So these would be expenditures that were made in July, uh, August and September. The largest of which is the training for our administrators that were not on contract during that training period. Teachers who are also not on contract, paraprofessionals who are also not being compensated because the school year hadn't started for the online platforms that were delivering instruction to, uh, all of our students. There's a different platform for, uh, K through five, pre-K through five. And there's also a different, then an, another, uh, platform for six through 12. If you have any questions about those, uh, training dollars, you're certainly welcome to ask. Um, I do believe Nancy's on and, and is very capable of, uh, describing exactly what went on. It was a Herculean, um, training, uh, process that we needed to take place in the summer so that our teachers were ready and our administrators and paraprofessionals were ready to deliver online instruction from day one. Other than that, there's just, you know, a few little items on there that we claim for. And so if you see the grand total of 710, you know, you can subtract that from 7.9 million because now I'm including the private schools in that number. So you get an idea of how much money is left. My understanding, the claim going forward, uh, for the next quarter will be in excess of a million dollars. So if you, you know, take roughly 2 million out of the 7.9 million, we have five, about 5.9 million dollars left Rhonda. Is that, if, I hope that answers your question.
I'm sorry, can you say that one more time? How much?
Alright. My understanding is we're processing right now.
Sorry, just the number.
5.9 million left.
5.9 million?
Yeah, and that of course has to be distributed to private schools as well in that pr- proration, prorated portion.
And what would that be roughly?
Well, if you go back to the previous slide, you can see it. Thanks Josh. There you have it.
I'm gonna go to Laura. Laura, you're on mute. I'm sorry.
Sorry. This, this would be, uh, so I'm gonna take up on your offer to talk to Nancy about, um, or to hear from Nancy about, uh, just a, a, a synopsis of kind of what, what kind of training did happen this summer. Um, for, you know, people watching taxpayers who, so that they can get a idea of kind of what, what, what happened over the summer in order for us to be able to, um, have some lift on the virtual program. Is, is she available?
And, and I, I'm sure she is, but I would like just to say one thing first. You know, I, I have 15 years of experience in a neighboring school district, um, uh, before I retired. And I would have to say that in that district, it's about one-tenth the size of Green Bay. Uh, had we engaged in a professional development during the summer for all of our teachers, our administrators and our aides, we call them aides in that district, um, uh, $60,000 would not be unusual. Uh, so when I see a training bill for the same type of people in a district that is 10 times the size, being $640,000, that to me is extremely reasonable. I know for the average person at home, that seems like a lot of money, but we have a lot of employees and there was a lot of training that went on and Nancy's team did a great job.
No, I, I, I have no doubt. I, I just, we heard from, um, we heard about it from time to time throughout the course of the summer. But it's been a few months. So I just, um, it might be a good time to sort of just remind people about the huge amount of work that happened over the summer in order to prep for the, the, the next school year.
Thank you Laura for asking. Um, I'd be more than happy to share with you um, the undertaking of the, not only the, um, professionals in teaching and learning, but our, uh, building administrators, our faculty, our, uh, special departments in the department, in our, in our, um, district office, special education, EL. Um, this, the work couldn't have been done that I'm going to explain if we didn't all team up and, and really lift the load together. First of all, we, we did not have a learning platform in the elementary and which many of you know that made it very difficult to provide instruction uh, from March until, um, June of last year. So we were very dedicated to getting not only in, in adopting, um, a learning platform uh, so that our elementary students could receive virtual instruction, um, in that platform. We also had to take a look at our curriculum, not knowing when we were going to be coming back on campus. We worked diligently to use the curriculum that has been adopted in our pacing guides to make sure that we are, we're following, um, students' growth and the, and what their anticipated learning should be each month. We had to take that curriculum and we had to, um, then rewrite uh, components of it so that it would apps, it could be delivered in an engaging way in our new platform. And that took restructuring, all of our, our, uh, curriculum units, uh, to, for the most part, um, going through and identifying the, what we call power standards or essential learnings. Um, and then just to truly to dive into what it's like and what you need to have in place to teach in the virtual environment. Teaching in face to face and teaching in the virtual environment is very different. And our supporting staff stepped up. They worked all summer to get a professional development plan in place. So we had our staff learning how to use a platform and and teach virtually while taking our curriculum and adapting our curriculum to be used in the virtual setting. Now, why that is so important is we never knew when we were coming back. And what we wanted to make sure that did not happen, that there were gaps in students' learning, that something was missed in teaching. Because then when we move back face to face, there should be no interruption in their continuum of learning, having used our curriculum throughout this whole closure. And of course, you know, like I had mentioned before, it it is different to teach online if to teach virtually than it is to teach face to face. It takes an enormous amount of time to re-rate that the curriculum. It also took a lot of time for our teachers to just get in and start using the platform and teaching the different components of it. And and then we put on multiple layers of professional learning. We modeled teaching and learning pushed into classrooms and modeled certain pieces of of lessons. And at the high school level, the same, really, you know, in the secondary was very much the same as really, although many of them have already, our high school folks had used the Google Classroom. Not all have had that opportunity or used it. So they teamed up, they redesigned their curriculum, they worked collaboratively and provided this virtual experience to the best of their ability. Is that what you were looking for?
Yes, I just, like I said, it's been a few, well, it's been quite a long time now since um since that happened. And I just thought it might be a good a good to just revisit it briefly and kind of let people know what the the summer was a period of enormous intensity for staff as they were preparing for the, you know, basically the unknown, you know, so thank you.
I just really have to give a shout out to our interventionists here too, though. That that was some really complex work that they had to engage in to be able to provide one-on-one and small group instruction virtually when they're used to having the child right in front of them where they really monitor the students' learning behaviors to know where to go in and teach the next new learning. So I I do have to give a shout out to them. They really, really pulled it. They they really pulled it together and provided phenomenal intervention services for our students in the closure.
Nancy, that was a really nice segue in closing. I just wanted to also say that this pandemic has been a struggle for everybody. It's been a struggle for the community, for families and 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 children. It also has been a struggle for the employees of the district. And I I thank everybody that has worked so hard and so diligently. And that includes not only our teachers who are working very hard, but those that support what goes on in the classroom. And I definitely want to thank parents for what they've done. I've got four grandchildren. Two of my grandchildren are young enough that they're not in school, but I do have two school-aged grandchildren who are at home. Both are medically fragile, so they have to be at home. And their parents and their teachers are doing fantastic jobs. And it's my hope and I pray that that's what's going on in most of our families. Thank you.
Erica, I have one more question.
Yep, and then we'll go to Andrew.
Okay, so is this where I would ask for clarification? Or would it be during the GP APS forward portion of the meeting about the district receiving twenty thousand dollars from United Healthcare? And the purchase of devices with blue light blocking technology? Would it be during this portion or would I do it during the other portion?
They're not CARES dollars, but they're related to some of the conversation we're having here. I think you could ask it here.
Okay, so there's um there's some confusion, there's some concern, there are questions. The Green Bay schools put up a post said, we're grateful to United Healthcare for donating twenty thousand dollars to the district to purchase devices with blue light blocking technology that may help reduce the risk of digital eye strain during virtual learning. So were there glasses purchased? And if there were, who's getting them and how are we distributing them equitably?
Sure, I can I can take that. Yeah, we've spent about fifteen thousand of that twenty. The original intention when we wrote for that donation was to provide devices for visually impaired program. We we frequently have a hard time connecting those students with devices that are appropriate for them due their due to their disabilities. When that Facebook message got posted, we got deluged at our schools for people were clearly interested in glasses. So we did kind of audible at that point. And so what I'm what I'm doing is I'm I'm getting some very specific equipment for the VI program, visually impaired program, that's gonna be about five thousand, fifteen thousand has been expensed on blue light glasses designed to fit kids pre-K through five. So up to ten years old, be because those are harder to find. And those just started arriving, what Jake on Thursday? I think we got our first shipment in of like two fifty and then we got another hundred and twenty. And then I think a bunch more are coming first week in February.
That's right, the remainder due the eighth of February.
Yeah, so the way I've asked to distribute these, obviously, so fifteen thousand dollars in glasses is like eighteen hundred glasses and we have a massive, massive district, okay? So the the way I've asked to distribute this is proportional to enrollment in in grades pre-K through five. So the larger enrollment of of those children, the more of an allocation they'll get. Those will go through the library. We're also asking our librarians to gauge the demand. And if we if we do run out and there appears to be significant demand, I was just talking with Pete about this today, the district may go into our own pocket and 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 purchase some additional glasses.
Okay, so I appreciate that information. So is it possible with students who will choose to remain virtual? I don't think it's debatable, the eye strain that's happening, right? With a lot of students, I'm sure, and we're hearing this from families. So we know that's that it's out there. Is it possible that we could actually use the CARES money for this? And if we didn't, why wouldn't we?
We certainly can.
Okay, we can, but are we interested in looking into that?
I think we need to understand what the demand is. I I think many families have already addressed this issue. I think we'll start to, I think we're going to start to see some patterns in demand at at our schools that will allow us to target, I I think.
So would we be interested instead of actually having families have to come to us? Would we be interested in maybe reaching out and finding out who would be interested so we know? Like as soon as possible, what that might look like? And then we could adjust to that with the CARES money?
Yeah, I I suppose we could, we could reach out. I would I would like to see what the demand is. Like I said, one once the inventory is on site here, which would be in February.
Yeah, I just, I think there are a lot of families that don't even know it's available.
Well, that's because they're not, they just they just showed up and, you know, we didn't, we didn't want them, you know, showing up at their libraries asking for something that wasn't there.
No, no, right. But I mean, I think there are families that don't even know about this. The fact that the district, you know, went and used that money and purchased it. They don't even, they're probably sitting home struggling. That could be part of the meltdowns you're hearing about with seven-year-olds, eight-year-olds, ten-year-olds. They don't even know that that's something that's out there for them, that's a tool for them. So I would love to see us actually do what we could to empower families in that way, that this is something that may actually help them, whatever that looks like.
Okay, yeah, that would probably involve the schools reaching out to their families.
Yeah, I'll I'll follow up on this. I appreciate the information. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Thank you. So I have to go back to the, I have to go back to the comment about the model, model car and the the PPE and and so forth. And I I I don't think it was on purpose, but we we have to be careful about how we're talking about things here. And I have been, you know, with hundreds of, you know, hundreds of of emails, dozens of phone calls from, you know, trying to navigate this issue of where we have kids that desperately want to go back to school. Parents that desperately want their kids back in school. Teachers legitimately and school staff legitimately concerned about safety, also wanting to get back into school when they can do so safely. I hope, and I I talk about creative and outside the box solutions all the time because I don't think historically we do that well here. It's a, it's a challenge anytime your organization is big. But I think particularly, again, I'm talking about things that started long before people who are in this meeting were here. To, you know, to say that, I I guess to equate, except at certain extremes, to equate a higher level of personal protective equipment as as a as a want and the difference between a a sixty thousand dollar vehicle that probably very few people watching this meeting can just run out and buy new and a twenty thousand dollar vehicle, which plenty of people watching this meeting also can't go out and buy new. It it's, I really hope if if someone wants some personal protective equipment that might might go above the minimum standards or might make us think, you know, okay, really, is this above the medical minimum? I would really hope if that's what gets a person back into the classroom, that we're going a a step or or two within, you know, I'm not talking about a vented bio. If somebody needs a vented biohazard suit, they're safer at home, of of course, right? But if that, you know, I had, you know, Noah told me early on this and it was it was unsolicited. He just came up to me and said, you know, the, I mean, it came from a conversation of how our kids feel about, you know, returning with masks. And he went out and asked people and he told me, I I believe it was that kids said, put me in a hazmat suit if you have to to get me back. And I was at least glad to hear that people, you know, wanted to go back that badly. So these are just some of the kind of things where I'm sure you're probably talking about the possibility that there might be a PPE request that's way out of left field, but we have district funds, we have CARES funds. And honestly, if, you know, if that staff member who's kind of on the on the fence about whether they're able to go back and or that parent who would really like to send their kid back, but is just afraid that maybe a mask isn't enough. I hope we're finding that one extra step with this money we have available or those two extra steps rather than just because I could see it being, nope, you're not in this high level enough of a risk. So you get the mask and the shield and, you know, I just hope we're not having limited thinking about this.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions? All right, Pete, team, Josh, everyone, thanks for the information on this. All right, it carries us next to Green Bay Public School District Forward. Steve, I guess I'll go it to you and then anywhere else we're gonna go after that.
So again, this is that item that was requested to put on the agenda. We carry forward I on a every other week basis. You have updated information in there just to be able to keep track of of where things are at. I know we're not using that burden rate anymore, but we supply that to you just for information purposes. And I, you now have a forum to ask questions about things that have not been on agenda items already that you'd like us to address or things that you want us to bring forward at upcoming meetings as we do our pandemic planning.
Right, anybody have anything specific, either questions for this meeting or something that you'd like more information brought back to another meeting? Go ahead, Rhonda.
Um, thanks. So Steve, could you, could you clarify the motion from the last meeting? With the language around vaccinations? So I've received questions from staff, I've received questions from families about the language regarding the timeline. And maybe just reading the motion in itself and then reiterating what that means.
So I can read that for you. It's that the Green Bay Area Public School District shall commence in-person instruction Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday for three-year-old kindergarten through fifth grade and AB cohorts in grade six and nine. Three weeks after the first day, vaccinations are available to school staff and a blended instructional model with grades seven, eight, ten, eleven and twelve, one week later. With the week of March twenty second, all students attending virtual and the same models of instruction resuming March twenty ninth. And that the administration should develop, shall develop criteria for transition to virtual learning due to the transmission of COVID within the district schools. Should the Brown County case burden reach one thousand cases per one hundred thousand population for fourteen days, an emergency board meeting shall be called regarding learning models. So I think what you're asking about is the phrase in there that says, I, I, let's see, make sure I read during one. I, three weeks after the first day, vaccinations are available to school staff. It's our understanding from I meetings with the Department of Public Instruction that on a weekly basis, the Department of Health Services will notify groups within one B, there are multiple categories within one B, who is next eligible to receive the vaccination. We're under the understanding at this point in time that those eligibility periods will begin on the next Monday. And so for us, then that would trigger, according to the language there that the board passed, that would trigger the reentry process for us to resume classes based on the models in the in the motion.
Okay, so is it your understanding that that is something that it becomes, I guess, noticed or publicly noticed once the sixty-five and older are completed?
We'll actually, according to what we were told by the Department of Public Instruction, we will receive specific notice I as school districts that our employees will be eligible and which date upon which they will be eligible. So as soon as we are provided that notification from the Department of Public Instruction or Department of Health Services, we would pass that information along to you as the board, to our staff and to the community because it would trigger that that the reentry process. I I'd also offer that our health services team has been very proactive in getting our one A staff certified and those staff members over are vaccinated, those staff over the age of sixty-five in the queue to get vaccinated. So they've developed a process which helps from a tutorial standpoint, helps our employees get their the appropriate piece of software set up if they can get that vaccination slot through one of the providers.
So do you anticipate the district actually maybe just to expedite the process? Is there anything that we're going to do to, I guess, maybe push for that or be part of the solution? Maybe we have people come to the district office? Can they be vaccinated on on site in a school? Is there anything that they can do other than go to a clinic?
Uh, so right now, I, we've been pushing the the state and the governor's office. to move teachers and other educational staff ahead in the process. And then we've also been working with our local providers. We've got two mass vaccination sites. One run by Bellon, one run by Provea. We've been working with them to see if there's the possibility that we can actually get additional hours scheduled that are outside of the regular teacher workday, which could facilitate their ability to get vaccinated on evenings and weekends. And then we're also working with the same company that provides our food vaccine to come on site. As with other vaccine providers, they are subject to the limited availability of the vaccine. Melissa's been working with them to set up a time when they could come on site. One of the challenges there is we have to actually contract ahead of time for the number of vaccines that we need. We, we need to do that now. And obviously because the other vaccine sites aren't open yet, we don't know how quickly they'll get people in. But we will be contracting with them to do some onsite vaccination for our staff.
Do you believe that if the board itself signed some sort of request or declaration with the district that we could actually maybe help the process out a little bit? Is it, is it possible that that would make a bigger statement?
Certainly wouldn't hurt. I, I know that I, our colleagues in other school districts have, I also sent letters in either on behalf of the administration or on behalf of the board. We banded together with the other large school districts to send one collective letter in, hoping that that will also have a larger impact. If the board is interested in, in putting a letter together, I've got several drafts that we could look at. I'd be more than happy to work with Eric and Brenda on that for a letter that we could sign on behalf of the, the board and the district administrative team and get that into Governor Eager's office.
I would be very interested in that personally. I don't know if anyone else would, but I think that wouldn't be a bad idea.
Yeah, good question. Good question, Rhonda. We'll get working on that right away and have an update for everybody.
And I'll get you a copy of the letter that we sent in on behalf of the, the large school districts.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Andrew. Sorry, you're on mute.
So I guess something about that, and I, I possibly could be wrong, so just let me know, but I, I wasn't sensing like a really strong, you know, let's leverage our size as a district to get, to get vaccinations here to let people come to work for the vaccine as a, as a primary option. And let's, I, I was hearing more of, well, you know, our providers are, are great and they're going to have, you know, their clinics, but maybe we'll have some, some sites here. I guess I, I'm wondering why there isn't more of a central focus on, you know, if, if we're, if the, the board decision, which the decision right now is that we're, we're linking to, to vaccine dates, it seems the least in, in, you know, not, it's not the least we can do. It's, it's a win-win for everybody concerned than if we speed up the, the vaccine. If even if return date, whether return date is tied to vaccine or not, but especially since it is, why, you know, why wouldn't we be focusing on that and leveraging our size as a district to get providers to do what works for, for us as one of their massive multimillion dollar a year customers?
So we are working very closely with them, Andrew, and I don't know if you saw the press conference that I was on TV. It, it's a massive undertaking to set up a vaccination site. And, and we're working closely with Bellon and Provea. And it, it logistically, it is to the district's advantage to work with them. They are likely to get the vaccine quicker than I, private third parties are. So the more effectively we can work with them, the greater likelihood is that we get our staff vaccinated quicker. So the, the short answer is the quickest way for us to get the vaccination is to work quickly with our major providers in the area who will get the vaccine first. And because of the complexity of distributing the vaccine, they are scaling up mass vaccination sites as the most efficient way to distribute those.
Okay, so how, how would you envision like how many? Do you think the primary model will be people making appointments at, at clinics, which I'm pretty skeptical of just because of kind of some of the things I've heard so far? Or do you think the prime, it'll end up being most people doing it here?
I presume that most people.
I mean, at our sites?
No, I presume most people will working, will be working to set up appointments through the mass vaccination sites. Those are the most efficient methods. Not on our sites, at the mass vaccination sites.
Okay, and, and that, sorry, and that's better than when, when we have, you know, I under, I would understand if we were a, you know, a district with 80 people who work here, but why would they not do something like that for a huge, a huge employer like us? I mean, healthcare facilities have it at their own facilities and they have fewer employees than us.
So the, I, as I understand it, they are going onsite to nursing homes and healthcare facilities. Everybody else is going to the mass vaccination sites. Those are the most efficient. They're anticipating that at each site, they'll be able to do 10,000 people a week. We have 4,000 employees. So obviously from a, an efficiency standpoint, they're far better off setting up mass vaccination sites that would, will take care of Brown County as a whole rather than duplicating that to take care of our employees in, in four days.
All right.
Can I ask a question about that, though? Do we know how many employees will want the vaccination?
We won't know that until they sign up.
Okay.
It's not mandatory.
Right, right. But I guess if it's, what I'm concerned about is that if they don't, if, if somebody is not coming forward as quickly as we'd like them to with this and it's contingent on the fact that we are a larger district and maybe it's, it's contingent on the fact that they think we're going to need a lot of vaccinations, but we actually don't have a number. Is there any way to gauge that beforehand?
So I, we will, as we are made aware that it is our turn in the queue, then we will have much better idea of that because we'll have staff signing up. And again, we're going to have some vaccinations that we can deliver through VaxPro onsite. And so our hope is that if there's a rush at the mass vaccination sites, that we'll be able to pick up some overflow onsite.
Okay. So I have some questions that don't involve vaccinations. Can I go for it? How many, how many special education students are onsite?
Uh, let's see, Claudia is not with us. Vicki, any chance you've got that number?
Or maybe how many are not onsite? And if they aren't not onsite, is there a plan to bring them onsite?
Being onsite would be determined by the IEP team. I'm checking in with Claudia right now on the number that we have. I think last time I heard we were shooting for about 126, Rhonda, but I'm not sure if that's the number. Oh, 300-ish.
300 is the number of what? I'm sorry.
Students on campus.
Right now?
Special ed.
Right now? Okay. Are there any that are not onsite that want to be onsite? Any family that aren't onsite yet with their students that would want to be onsite? That wouldn't choose to be home? Would there be any reason, I guess, that there would, wouldn't be any students in special education that would be, want to be onsite that would have to go through some other process? Or is everyone that wants to be onsite onsite with special ed?
I would guess not. Having that said, in the IEP meetings, that is determined by the full team.
Okay. Okay, so what are we doing to make sure that, that that process is being honored for families?
Well, it's a, it's a legal process. So if a parent had a concern that the IEP team made a determination that broke their law, broke the law, there is a process they could go through the DPI to rectify.
Would that process, rather than having to go through that bureaucratic process, right, which parents probably don't have any energy for right now? I can't imagine they do. Is there a way that they can come to the district before they would have to do that? Is there any way that they could come to the board? Is there any other avenue that they have rather than going through that, that process that is very cumbersome and exhausting in a cumbersome and exhausting time?
Sure. The Associate Directors of Special Education have quads. They would be the team to reach out to. Also Claudia has, Claudia Henrickson, for those watching, always makes herself available to parents for discussions like this, Rhonda. Wouldn't be appropriate to go to the board, but certainly to the administrative team.
But I mean, if they came to the board so that they could actually be, right, because, I mean, they elect us and they reach out to us because sometimes they don't know what to do. So then we could connect them with Claudia, correct?
Yeah, and actually, yeah, Rhonda, good opportunity to plug that parent group again. I think they made a statement maybe two board meetings ago. And I can ask them if they would make another statement. I know John Yankee's been a leader of that group. And that parent group, part of their goal is to help parents that struggle with this part because it is hard if you've never been through the IEP process before. So I'll ask John if he would be willing to, to make another statement.
Okay. Yeah, no, that'd be great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And go.
Go ahead, Andrew. Oh, yeah, then Noah. Sorry, Noah, I missed you.
Oh, no, do you know your hand light is on too? I didn't know if that was because you were signaling to speak or because the last time you said it was by mistake, so. I'll defer because he's had that thing on for 15 minutes. So I'll, I'll let him go first. I thought maybe it was an accidental hit of the hand thing and a hand raised 10 seconds ago, but it's not. He's had the thing on for 20 minutes, so I'll defer.
Go ahead, Noah.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I feel like I'm in classic hearing. Okay. I, I think it was kind of explained. I just kind of want it, you know, clearly laid out. As far as the, the, in that motion, it says like, once the vaccine is available. So would those mass testing sites becoming available to, to teachers? Is that kind of how that's planning on being defined at this time?
Yes, that, that's the anticipation is that we're going to get the green light from either the Department of Health Services or the Department of Public Instruction that tells us on date X that, that teachers are in the queue and that they're able to sign up and, and either go through those max vaccination sites or that will then allow us to work with our vaccination provider to bring them onsite. And, and then as soon as we know what that first date is, whatever that date X is that the state says is the first day available for our teachers, then we move forward three weeks and that would be our anticipated start for returning students to campus under that motion. We have been told that at least at this point in time, we presume that that date X is going to be a Monday. So it'll be three weeks from that Monday. That make sense?
Yes, it does. Thank you, Mr. President. If I could just offer one thing on the middle of the quiet. So I do appreciate we'll have like a solid verifiable date. I think that's important, at least like there's, here's when it starts. And once we know that, that's, that's a big deal. Yeah, I guess I'll just keep looking, looking to Mondays then. As far as more generally under, under this item, I, this is one of those outside the box opportunities that I think just deserves a very brief shout out. At West, I had an opportunity to go back into the school building. It had been, and I, yeah, I used an online calculator because I wasn't ready at my hand. 313 days since I last been inside of a school building, which is interesting we'll go with. But either way, the opportunity was, was nice. And that's the kind of things that are happening at buildings that might not always get seen here, but are important. And that is an important part of keeping students engaged. So I'm glad that that's being worked on, especially at, at the building level. I just got encouraged the board to keep making, to perhaps still adopt a date when, when things go back just so that we know kind of what the plan is. But it does help to see that there's a plan here for, for what is considered the start date of that three-week countdown. Nice to hear. I hope we keep moving forward and hopefully we get back in school pretty soon with the board, the board goes forward. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thanks, Noah. Go ahead, Andrew.
Okay, so it, it, I, I just want to point out, it is a choice to say that amendment, official amendment to the IEP is, is the criteria for some, starting some onsite instruction again. Yeah, that's a choice and it is a choice that will drastically slow and limit, right, as opposed to how many people, it's, it's, it asks a different question than how many of our highest need kids can we safely reach in person now with staff who's safely able to participate before the opening date? I would, I would venture to guess that even in normal times, assembling, assembling an IEP team and finding times that, that work to have a meeting probably is going to take in many cases longer than it would take to get the, the vaccine here. And in, in essence, that if, if that is a sole criterion that you have to get it into the IEP meeting, then that number of, of 300 will be lucky if it's 400 by the time we, we start or 500. I mean, there's just, it's not a lack of effort. It's not, there's just not enough people to go around. The process is, is extensive. You know, none of the, or okay, not none, probably few of the IEPs specifically said that instruction would be in person and not virtual pre, pre-pandemic. So could we be, if there's a good reason to not be doing more, I mean, obviously you are meeting the legal minimum by saying if the IEP has formally changed to require in person, then we'll do in person. Yeah, you kind of have to find a way for that. Are we even going to try to do more or is that not being contemplated?
So Vicki's on screen. Before she starts, I'll just say that I, I know that it's, it's working through that IEP process to make sure that students and their parents feel safe sending their kids back. That we're able to go through the safety protocol with them. You know, keep in mind that when we started this process, we were bringing students back well before the burden rates that the board had adopted. And so we put a process in place that we thought would follow the, the spirit of the board policy and yet provide safeguards for students and families. Vicki?
Thank you. Yes, we have two processes outside of the IEP as a reminder. The first one was a more formal process specifically for academics and co-curriculars athletics. That's the one that with the paperwork, Andrew, that you bring up. The other is an informal process. Steve had mentioned at a, a board meeting maybe two months ago to address struggling students. So Rhonda, I probably should have. So Rhonda, I probably should have said this when, uh, you asked your question earlier, because some of our special education students do fall into this one. Informally, if it is identified that a student is struggling, uh, the teacher can work with the principal to request the student come on campus for a period of time during the week to get some face to face support. And we do have some, uh, special education students, as I was just reminded via text, uh, that fall into that category, Rhonda. So schools are working on that stage right now.
And I appreciate that. Um, but I do want to ask, because I've also received messages that I'm being told that there are teachers out there who are waiting for administrative approval for special education and it is not a matter of, of a parent with an IEP request. It's more of the actual staff looking for approval. Is there any reason why that would be happening? And is there anything we can do about that to move that process along quicker?
If you could refer the people that are contacting you to me, I'll look into it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions, uh, general questions related to any of these topics?
I have some.
Okay, go ahead.
Me?
Yeah.
Sorry, okay. Um, thank you. Does the district track any sort of mental health data at all? Do we have anything that we're keeping track of with regards to that? We hear from a lot of families that they are struggling. We know this is actually a problem, um, well, not just probably nationally, universally. So is there anything that we're doing to, to point to that we know that there's actually something out there?
We do the youth risk behavior survey every two years, Rhonda. Um, so we knew that a large percentage of our students, just like, uh, other districts in the state of Wisconsin, uh, struggle with mental health issues. We haven't done the survey this year. The state of Wisconsin's holding it until we get back to, uh, a regular schedule. They're hoping for next year to do it again. We don't do an internal survey. Our social workers and school counselors, uh, keep track of the students that they work with individually, but we don't track that at the district level.
Okay, so why not? I mean, I, I want to ask this in the most diplomatic, respectful way that I can. How are we not tracking that?
Are you suggesting doing the youth risk behavior survey this year?
No, I'm not, not, not even that. I guess I want to, I just want to be mindful of how I'm asking this question. We know from families, we know from staff, we know there are teachers out there who are experiencing, witnessing their students basically disappearing, falling apart. How are we not tracking that? How are we not documenting that? That seems to be something that I believe the board needs to know, unless you're lucky enough to have someone reach out to you. That, that seems to be something that is a byproduct potentially of what we're doing, right? The, the fact that this is the, the virtual format and what is happening. Maybe it's not that. Regardless of, of what is going on, we're tracking a lot of other things, but how are we not tracking mental health in that capacity? How can we track what teachers are experiencing, what families are experiencing? Um, how do we know that what we're doing isn't a liability? If we can say that it's not and we, and we are claiming, some of us are claiming that it's not and that the risk is still being weighed, that virtual is a better option and it's a safer option, but we don't actually know this because we're not tracking what families and, and kids are and staff are seeing and experiencing. Or maybe it's impossible. What would it take for us to do that? I guess we, we have staff who are telling us what they're seeing in regards to their students. What, what, I guess, what is happening with that information? Is it, is it going anywhere? And if it is?
We don't have access to that information, Rhonda. But that's, I mean, one of the things that you're asking for is us to track information that, that's not trackable in terms of, uh, data we have access to. I would offer that back on, in November, when we had our social emotional learning team in, uh, and they, they did that extensive presentation on the work that they're doing with students. You know, they do in, uh, in the formal settings, um, have access to some of that data, that data that they track, um, those student interactions and the work that they do with those kids. But some of what you're asking about is things that are happening at home and, and we simply don't have mechanisms to track that data. Vicki, I know you were gonna offer something there too.
So, no, I want to make sure that that's, that's not really what I'm saying. What I'm saying is when you have a student in a classroom who is sharing with the teacher or they're seeing the meltdowns or they're, they're saying that can't do this anymore. And, you know, we've heard, we've heard this. Is there, are we taking that information and are we using it? Because I believe as a board, we should be using this feedback directly from our students and our, and our teachers to make decisions. And if we're not, there are school districts out there who are tracking this in some capacity. I'm just wondering, there's a lot happening that's not good. And what are we doing with that, those experiences? And yes, those teachers have relationships with their students and they're, and they're heartbroken as well. What is, what is their recourse? What can they do with that information themselves? Like, is anyone taking that and?
Our teachers are mandatory reporters. Our teachers are mandatory reporters. If a student is expressing any type of struggle, they have to report it. And the way we do it, like every other district, is they report it to student services. Student services follows up with every student that they're concerned about.
Okay, so, but, but couldn't we actually also consider, um, not logging in to class or, or truancy, um, right? And you know, I'm speaking specifically to this virtual format. That's what I'm speaking to. I'm not talking about sexual abuse and all the other things that we know are not being, is attended to because of the format. But I'm thinking about the meltdowns, the struggles, the, the not logging in and the truancy. I'm just wondering, we as a board have not seen those records. We don't know how many students are, aren't logging in. We don't know the, um, the truancy reports. We don't know this information. I feel like we're missing so much information. Um, is it possible that we can have that? Are you tracking that? And are, I mean, is, is the district tracking when kids don't log in and they're, and they scream and turn their computer off and run away? Do we know that?
Rhonda, can I, uh, ask you a question? And I'm not, I'm not, I don't want this to be combative, but, um, and I don't want to downplay, I don't want this to come off as insensitive to where we're at right now, but, um, behaviors similar to what you're describing, you know, running, screaming, running away, I mean, uh, reactions, that happens when we're in person too. Um, and, uh, you know, maybe the data that you're talking about would be interesting, but we wouldn't have anything to compare it to. Is that high? Is that low? Is it better? Is it worse? Um, not logging into a computer is, is certainly concerning, but there's a lot of different reasons, um, behind some of that. So, um, you know, asking teachers to track, uh, and, and keep data on the engagement of every student, uh, every day, in every class for every student, um, would be a monumental task to collect, um, that piece of data. So I'm not saying that I'm not interested in, in what you're asking, the questions that you're asking, but I don't know that it's, uh, quantifiable from a data perspective.
Well, I would definitely, um, say that I'm not asking every teacher to track every student, but if you have a student that hasn't logged in for three weeks or you have a student that has a pattern of not logging in, maybe more than, you know, twice a week, you have a serious problem. And so I'm wondering about that in particular, if there are patterns or there are students that we're seeing that are not engaging on a regular basis.
Absolutely. There are, yeah, absolutely. And, uh, the schools do home visits. Our student services staff, along with the administrator, have been doing a home visits to reach out to the kids you're talking about, Rhonda.
Mm-hmm. And, and I'm, I'm very appreciative of that, but as a board member, I want to know how much of that is happening. Because my decisions should be informed and they should be done with fidelity as far as why am I deciding this? And we're hearing from families, we're hearing from teachers, but we don't have that data in our hands. And people are actually asking why we don't have it in our hands. And I think that would be something that, in order to make the best decisions we can, we should have that in our hands. I, I think we should. And, and I have a question about the, the not logging in. There's a story out there, um, in Manitowoc that parents are getting truancy tickets. We've had truancy, uh, conversations at the board table before, Vicki, and we've talked about the tickets. Are there families in our district? Because we're going to be asked this now that this is out there. Are there families in our district that are receiving truancy tickets this year?
Our message to our principals is that we will not direct any, uh, serving of truancy tickets. So, um, that doesn't mean that the police department can't on their own make that decision and they might for a variety of reasons, but it won't be through the direction of the district, Rhonda.
So if they, okay, so the administration won't direct any or can it be directed at the building level?
I'm sorry, that's what I meant. The, the principals and their teams won't be directing.
Okay, so what would be a reason why there would be a truancy ticket? Um, like, why would a student, if the, but the district's not directing it, why would the family get a ticket? Or like, maybe what are some of the reasons why they would?
Yeah, I just realized I said there could be a variety of reasons and I, I, at the top of my head, I can't, uh, come up with one. Um,
So we, I guess, okay, but I'm not trying to be on the spot. I'm just trying to understand this, this.
Yeah, I do have an example. I do have an example. Um, it, perhaps a student has been involved in some criminal activity and it's, it's happening during daytime when the police department knows they should be logged in at home. That would be one example.
Okay. Um, but just would the police department actually know to contact the district? Maybe there's a reason that the, I mean, that's a pretty slippery slope there. Um, the student gets a truancy ticket because they're not logged into class. Maybe there's something happening, maybe the class was canceled. Is there any sort of follow through with the family and the district before that ticket gets issued? Because if I'm a, I guess I'm trying to understand from the, does the police department have, how much power do they have when it comes to citing someone for truancy without contacting the district? I just want to understand that.
They would, yeah, they wouldn't need to contact the district prior to giving a citation to anyone.
Right.
Hmm. Okay.
Rhonda, if you have some other questions, I, I just want to get around, uh, to some other hands that are up.
Get around, you can come back to me, thank you.
Laura, did you have any questions?
Um, these, um, and I don't know if Vicki can answer this question, but it's, it's a lot of these, a lot of these questions that Rhonda just had, I feel like they're, um, about mental illness and truancy and things like that. I, and what the board is entitled to know, seem to be cut, cut very closely to, um, confidentiality. Like what, what, you know, when we start talking about the men, the mental health, that's a medical condition of students. Um, I wonder about, uh, you know, what is, what do we have a right to know as board members? Um, you know, I, I just, it feels uncomfortable to me to be talking on, on these very, very personal family matters. Um, and I don't know if you, I don't know, I, I, what do, I mean, Vicki, am I, am I just wrong about that?
Contact logs are where our student services staff keep confidential information about their interventions with our students. Those are the types of things that we wouldn't disclose publicly. Um, and I would say to, to Eric's point earlier, um, mental health continues to be a problem in Wisconsin. The pandemic certainly hasn't helped. And virtual learning isn't ideal, Rhonda. You're right, it isn't ideal. Uh, we're trying to do the best we can right now with the resources that we have in hopes that that vaccine will get here sooner rather than later. So, um, yeah, there we go.
Right. Um, can I respond to that though? Um, I sure hope for many families that we do have a non-negotiable start time for them. That if the vaccine is here and it never reaches our district, that we are listening to them and we are validating that. Um, and to Laura's, uh, concern about, I don't want specific information about, I don't need, um, Sally's mental health record, but as a board, you better believe that we need to know when four out of 18 kids are logging into classes. That is something that we need to know. That is something that absolutely we need to know. So I'm not looking for specifics. I'm very aware of what we have a right to have access to, but as a board who governs the district, we need to know this information.
All right, any other questions? Go ahead, Noah.
I just, uh, I just remind the board that, that if you haven't had a chance to revisit it, um, if you go back to November 9th, um, you'll see both the handout and the slide deck uh, that were presented by the social emotional learning team, uh, on the work that they're doing, uh, to confront many of the issues that we're talking about tonight. Um, I know November seems like a long, long time ago, uh, but, uh, there is a lot of really good information in there uh, that provides a, a, a good context, um, for the work that, that, uh, our staff are doing to, uh, address the mental health issue. Uh, and, and it may not have so many information in there that Rhonda's looking for, but I think it has a lot of the information, um, so that might be a good refresher.
Um, Steve, I, the information specifically I'm looking for is, do we have an issue with kids not logging into the virtual format? Do we have an issue with kids just disappearing in the middle of the day? These are things I'm hearing from teachers as well, not just families. Um, and what is the number of families that have left the district? I mean, if we're going to talk about liability and issues that the board needs to know, that's one of them. So.
And we, we do have our, uh, third, uh, third Friday counts. Uh, Josh is going to be bringing that, uh, to a subsequent board meeting.
Okay. Yeah, that would be something as well that I believe it's time to, to talk about.
Noah, did you have something else to ask?
Uh, yeah, if I could, thank you. Um, I don't know, I think I, I'm gonna just throw it out there, it's not too long. Uh, just in response to some of this. So, um, I did get, so just so that it's, uh, there's some staff have basically said a lot of, uh, the concerns brought up by, uh, you, Ms. McHale, or by Ms. McHale have been, are being addressed, you just don't see it, uh, at the, at the building level. What, what you choose to do with that is up to you. I'm just saying that that's kind of what people have told me. So, uh, just really that. Also, um, a lot of, I'm gonna just say from a student, from, from my perspective, what concerns me is, is not as much what concerns me is is not as much people visibly not there. It's people who log in, you can keep a camera off, so they're attending everything. I don't know, I, that's like, I've gotten messages that I really don't know how to answer. And you know what's bad when people are asking Noah Beggar for help? Um, but that's how, like, I don't know, I I'm just pointing it out there that like, some of the messages I've got are from people who have better grades than I do. And they they're going every, they're going to every class period. You can do that now. And that's where there's a lot of concern that I don't really know what, I I don't know what the solution is to that. I'm just throwing it out there just so, so the point is out there, if that makes sense. Um, that people who are going to everything, they got the good grades, they got good attendance. That's who I've gotten some of the most concerning stuff from. And that, and they know, they know that teachers are mandate mandated reporters. That's why they don't bring it up. That's why, right, like, and that's beyond you guys. I get that. I'm just saying that like, that that kind of concern is out there too. And that's what a lot of students specifically have asked me about or to bring up at this board meeting. Is that what, we're we're not going to get seen, we're not going to get caught up in this, but we have some very real concern, that there are some real concerns. And I've seen some really, really scary things that I really have no answer to. So I'm just, I, what I'm putting out there is essentially, there are kids who would get missed by looking for bad attendance, bad grades, not being active because they're there, but they're struggling a lot. And I just want to make that point that some of the kids that might get missed in some of the more, like, look for attendance, look for bad grades, are are the ones who are are in some of the worst situations. So I just want to want to put that out there for you to consider. Thank you.
Thanks, Noah. All right, uh, any other questions on this topic before we move to face mask policy? All right, um, so kind of continuation of GBAP's forward, uh, talk a little bit about the face masks.
Eric, actually, I do, I'm sorry, I had my hand up.
Okay.
Can I, please, thank you. Um, so is there any consideration for revising or looking into a timeline at all? Are we, is there any appetite at all for that? I mean, hearing what we're hearing from from people knowing what's going on, is there any consideration at all? Are we, are we open to it?
I don't think that we're going to open in uh in this meeting, see the, seeing as six days ago, we we uh, you know, that that last decision. Um, I'm not saying that it's uh going away forever, but I don't think a at least personally, um, and I don't know if anybody else in the board wants to weigh in, but that that we're prepared to to propose anything here tonight.
So you can understand why people would ask that, though, because there was a meeting on a Monday and by Thursday we had a different proposal, right? I mean, so it's entirely possible. Um, and they're they're looking for some relief, they're looking for some change, they're looking to not have to leave the district. Um, they're not, they're not really trusting that their kids are going back this year. Um, and they're making some pretty difficult decisions because of what they're experiencing and what we're listening to every day. If there was a potential to have that conversation, what would the process look like and what what would the avenue be? If it's not tonight?
Yeah, I mean, i- in a work session, we're not able to to vote on a motion anyway. So I mean, we could
Right.
talk about things in the hypothetical, but if a motion were to be made in a a work session, uh, or excuse me, in a regular board meeting, which happens next on February seventh, um, or February eighth, um, sorry on the calendar, but um, yeah, that that would be the next opportunity for the board to vote unless another special meeting was called like happened last week.
And this will be the last thing I'll say about this. And so and just to be honest, when I hear that even though we have millions of dollars, we cannot acquire any additional support staff because I guess they're not out there. There's, you know, the numbers of of staff available in the mental health field are low. So when we know that that's not a potential for relief for families, right, that doesn't seem to be an option. Because I know that the conversation out there has been, well, use the CARES Act money and and support these students in a, you know, right now and 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 help them out. And when that's not an option, and that's what I heard tonight, was that it was not an option, then we're, it seems like we're just basically hoping, you know, kind of thoughts and prayers. And I I want us to consider that. We now know we can't hire more support staff for these families that are struggling and these kids that are struggling. Right? I mean, the, we we talk about the loud parents, but behind the loud parents are kids who are struggling. And that matters. So I would hope that we could consider maybe having another conversation sooner than later about that. Thank you.
All right, um, face mask policy. Steve, did you have a specific?
I'm on mute there. Uh, Melissa has uh been working with WASB to look at some model policy. Uh, she's drafted, uh, uh, I think what is a a comprehensive opportunity for us to move forward and and provide clear direction um for our students, their family and our staff regarding expectations. So Melissa, I'd turn the floor to you.
Thanks, Steve. I just want to thank my team as well for all the work that they put into this uh or the past few weeks in getting this to the board in this quick manner. Uh, we did look at the WASB policy as well as other model policies throughout the state and country to bring you what we think is probably the most effective way of putting together a board policy in the interest of transparency for our families and our students as to what the expectations will be when returning onsite as well as our administration and staff with enforcing those rules. Uh, in the quick turnaround that we had, we were able to get input from various stakeholders, including administrators and representatives of teachers, and get their thoughts as to what were was most important from them as we put a policy forward. So that's what you have in front of you tonight.
Okay, any um questions on the face covering policy? All right, um, oh, go ahead, Brenda.
Um, one of the questions I have is under enforcement, discipline and sanctions. Um, and the rule, Brenda? Uh, yeah, the rule, yep. Um, and I'm wondering what uh, I'm hoping that we're going to have a pretty um strict following of this procedure and that there's not going to be a lot of second chances, especially for um the kids, the ones you referred to as uh, you know, that even after being told to put on the face mask, they continue to take the face mask off. Um, I guess I'm just wondering if if somebody wants to weigh in with um, uh, how how many uh, I mean, is this going to be, if you deal with that, you're done or you get a second chance? Or kind of what's the thinking around that?
Vicki, I'm wondering if you could come on and speak to the um application of the MLSS to this.
Right, our goal um is to work with the student as much as we can to determine what the cause be, uh, just with any behavior that uh if a student isn't following our expectations. Um, as you've said, at some point, we would have to consider moving a student to learning as a a safeguard for the other staff and students.
Go ahead, Andrew. You're on mute.
Thank you. If 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 this was March or April, I probably, I probably would have dove a lot deeper into this and had uh, you know, had five or six hypotheticals and everything, but um, the reason I don't is is honestly, I'm I'm, I think kids get it better than the adults. I've I've heard it, uh, you know, parents are, you know, parents are saying it. I I see, you know, little little kids who are accompanying parents somewhere and it's just um, I think maybe the the kids understand more universally that hey, this this thing might be annoying, but it might help us all stay in school and get back to normal faster. So I'm gonna, just gonna suck it up and and put it on. And I think while most adults act that way, I think maybe it's close to all kids of an age and ability that can understand do that. So um, we certainly might have to revisit this if it becomes a bigger problem than I thought. But, you know, I'm hearing, I'm hearing kids, many kids say, I want to return to virtual enough that I'll follow any rules. So I'm I'm optimistic for how mask working is gonna work out here. And I'm o- optimistic that this, we won't have to hear a lot about problems with this policy.
All right, Brenda.
Yeah, I just think it's really important that we set a precedent that this is going to be required. Um, I agree with Andrew. I've told people that. I know we have um uh, teachers have um been concerned because there have been parents that are um uh stating that there's no way they're gonna make my kid wear a mask and and those kinds of things. But I've told people, I think, I think the kids are, um, like you said, Andrew, I I I agree with what you said. I think they'll they'll follow that. But with that said, I think, you know, masking is um the best protection we have um for our kids, for our staff. Um, it's the best, it's the best way, it's it's the best protection that we have to make sure that we, once we open, we can stay open. Um, and I I um, I just feel that that needs to be something that we um that it's a legitimate, serious safety issue if we have people refusing to wear masks who don't have a medical reason not to.
All right, Noah.
Mr. President, uh, brief question under uh section five, that's enforcement, discipline and sanctions. Set subsection C, sub subsection four, the um, it says, I, I'm sorry, I'm doing a hypothetical thing, just briefly. Um, if someone were to be reassigned who to the virtual program because they're just not gonna wear a mask, uh, I don't think it'll happen. If it does, who would who would determine that?
Administrators of the building would work on that. Noah?
All right, thank you. That's all I have. Policy looks good. It seems to make sense to me. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, any last comments on the mask policy? All right, uh, we will move on then to kind of the the last two agendas are closely related. So we'll see how they they flow back and forth, but uh, independent hearing officer.
So I know that uh this is a continuation of a conversation that's taken place in the board. Uh, and I believe if I'm not mistaken, this might have been the last thing that the board talked about when you were in person last March. Uh, and uh, it's been a while, I, in terms of returning it to the the board for consideration. I, so we have it back on the agenda now. I, and uh, obviously, it's not been a significant issue for us because um many of the things that might have uh given rise to these types of activities uh resulting in the need for uh this type of action have not occurred while we've been uh offsite. But um, Melissa's done a a wonderful job putting some materials together. I'm gonna turn over her, let her uh, let her walk you through it.
Hey, Steve, and uh also joining us tonight is Alan. Uh, thanks for sticking with us for the last agenda item of the night. As you know, Alan Krieger is our discipline and um discipline and discrimination coordinator and our Title IX coordinator. So I'm gonna open up with a few remarks and then Alan's gonna tell you really why we're bringing this back yet again to you. And this is um a another twist in the expulsion and intersection of Title IX and why we are once again um asking the board to consider the implementation of an independent hearing officer for our expulsion proceedings. As we've been before you before, we, you know that the Wisconsin statutes uh confer authority to school boards for the expulsion of students. And as part of those statutes, a board is able to adopt on an annual basis the ability to have an independent hearing officer or an independent hearing officer panel preside over those expulsion hearings. The independent hearing officer uh conducts the hearing and then makes a recommendation. And then the board evaluates that recommendation. And only the board can determine whether to expel a student or um reject the recommendations of the independent hearing officer. The uh nor additional evidence would be um provided to the board when you review that independent hearing officer. Um, when you review the the information from the independent hearing officer, but it would be solely your decision as to whether a student would be expelled. As you know, one of the advantages of adopting an independent hearing officer is just the ability to schedule the hearings in a timely manner. We are um restricted in the number of days that a student can be out pending an expulsion hearing, especially students who have an have an IEP and that is governed by IDEA. However, with the uh creation of the new Title IX rules, and Alan's gonna review those with you as to what the implications are to expulsion hearings, where we are even more restricted. And there are even more obligations placed on a board of education in order to conduct those hearings that would make um inappropriate to reconsider the ability to have an independent hearing officer preside over those expulsion hearings at this point in time. So I'm gonna turn that over, the presentation over to Alan and she can uh provide that information to you.
Thank you, Melissa. Um, I think I've been before most of you before. Um, and in doing so, I've been talking um a lot about the new Title IX regulations and how it made us do a huge change in the way a district responds to a Title IX um allegation or investigation. Um, part of the new regulations um that I that have come out, um, and they were, they were brought out in May, implemented in um August of this year. So we had very little time window to to come up with this whole new plan. But we've put it together and I think we have um come up with a very good process. And we've um established what we needed to do in the fact that we have to distinguish roles for each piece of the Title IX procedure. So we had to have a coordinator, which we were lucky, the district already had appointed me in that position. We had have an investigator, um, which we now have. Um, thank you to the board for approving that. Um, we have to appoint a decision maker and an appeal decision maker. And every one of those individuals needs to be a different individual. No one is serving in multiple roles there. Um, the law just does, simply doesn't allow it. Um, with one minor exception, um, on the investigation side. But um, the 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 decision maker and the appeal decision maker must be separate people. So as I, I went through before, the items that qualify under Title IX are sexual harassment, sexual assault, dating violence, domestic violence and stalking. If we look at our policies, we would probably expel students for every single one of those items. With maybe the exception of sexual harassment, depending on how severe it is. But certainly the other four would be expellable offenses. So how this process works, the according to the law, is we get an allegation in. If they file a formal complaint, we go through an investigation period. It goes through a a timeline. I'm not going to get all the way into that with you again. And then it goes to the decision maker. And the decision maker makes a determination as to what the sanction is. So the decision maker can make a determination that the that the student should be expelled, but the, the decision maker does not have the authority to expel a student. Only the board does, right? So now we have a situation where the board technically is going to have to be appointed a decision maker because you would have to decide if the student could be expelled. Where this really comes into play is the regulations are very prescriptive in the, um, training that each of these roles must have. So, um, they recommend at least eight hours to, um, for an investigator, for a decision maker, for an appeals process person. I, I've probably been through 20 hours, Melissa, would you say? 30 hours, 40 hours? I've been through a lot of training and it is intense and it is a lot to learn. Um, I know I've sent through some administrators that are like, um, district decision makers and appeal decision makers and they found it very intense, um, and a lot of information. So if, if we follow this process through, the board members would need to be decision makers, which means every single one of you would have to have this training in order to sit on an expulsion hearing. So you're talking, every single one of you would have to have a probably five to eight hours of training before you could serve as, as someone on the expulsion hearing. Um, if we had an independent hearing officer, only that person or the panel, um, depending on how many you would appoint, would need that training and it would be on them to get the training. It's not something that, you know, we could direct them, but it'd be on their time to get that training. So I'm guessing that you're probably looking at me going, but we have a new administration, right? So this is gonna change. This, the, the Title IX regulations were based on Trump. We now have Biden. It's gonna be something different. Not so fast. I wish that was the answer, but it's not. Um, what happened is with the Trump administration, they put forth, this is a rule making decision. Um, the previous administrations put forth more guidance documents. This is a rule. This carries the force and effect of law. So in order for the Biden administration to overturn it, they have to go through that rulemaking process again. So there's several things they could do. So they could choose, the Biden administration could say, let's not enforce that. That's great. The problem is the rules have the force of law and there have been some court decisions on this. The courts can still enforce it. So we're still under that problem of having to follow the law because even if they say don't, the, someone could sue us in court and we'd still be under that, they would still have legal standing. So there's one issue about with that. Um, the other thing is, um, and I will tell you that there are some recent court cases that talk about due process and kind of follow these regulations. So we're kind of in this catch 22 where the district could have some liability if we choose not to enforce it. So highly not recommended. Um, the rulemaking process is a very lengthy process. If you recall, when these regulations came out, they first proposed them in November of 2018, they had a hundred and 25,000 comments they had to float through to get these to its final destination, which was May of 2020. That's how long it took them to get the regular rule published from November 18th to May 2020, a year and a half. So we're looking at probably the same thing because a lot of the, the talk is there are some good things about this rule. There are some not so good things. So would they repeal it all? Would they partially repeal it? There's just a whole realm that they would have to consider. So that, it's gonna be lengthy before that happens. Um, so with this in mind, the district from a liability standpoint needs to follow the regulations as they exist now until we get something that overturns this rule from the federal government. So that brings us back to the fact that if we don't appoint a federal, uh, independent hearing officer, all of you need significant training. And it's, it's important because there are very different rules of evidence that occur in a, in a hearing for Title IX versus an expulsion hearing. So there's all of this that you'll have to keep in mind and keep in mind how often if these come forward, I mean, right now, they're not coming forward a lot, um, all the way through to the expulsion process. But when they do, you're gonna have to recall all of those rules of evidence. It's, it's, I think some of them could speak to the fact that this is a pretty intense process. So with that, that's the reason why the Title IX is really kind of another driving force behind this. And I'll turn it back to Melissa to, to finish up with comments.
Andrew, do you wanna ask your question or do you want me just to make the closing remarks and then ask?
Uh, go ahead.
Okay. So what, what I started with was that every time, um, to make the, the appointment of the independent hearing officer is for the school year in which you make the appointment and it needs to be done on an annual basis. So we would recommend for this particular school year that you would make the appointment of the independent hearing officer, which would buy us some time in seeing what will happen with the rules going forward. It would be for the remainder of the school year. If in the meantime, uh, it's looking like the rules are not going to go away, we could then, um, look at finding, uh, and Alan generously says five to eight hours. It would really be more than like eight to 10 hours per board member for this training, given that, um, it, it's going to take time for you to do the training. There's going to need to be question and answer period because it really is, we're talking about legal burdens. We're talking about legal, um, frameworks in applying to the Title IX process. And, um, it, it takes a little bit to, to get through all of it. And I know Steve did the training and I think after he did the training, he came to the realization that maybe we needed to bring this back one more time to see what the board's thoughts were about moving forward with an IHO, at least for this school year, until we can get through, um, the unknowns with the Title IX process and what the, the new administration is going to do with this. Because keep in mind, if we had an expulsion tomorrow that dealt with one of these, what, what are typically called the big five now under Title IX, you would not be able to preside over that because you are not trained. And so we are, are in a bit of a predicament at this point because you haven't been trained in being able to preside over the expulsion hearing. And remember in Wisconsin, we are limited in the amount of days that a student can be suspended pending that expulsion.
Uh, Andrew and then Laura.
Okay. So you're, you're talking about something that could be, would not, would not be binding beyond the 2020, 2021 academic year?
The, the appointment of the IHO, it would only be for the, the school year in which you make the resolution. And then we would have to bring it back again July 1st for 2122.
Okay. So I can, I can tell you if I, if I am, if I am still around on this, that I am a hard, hard no in July to do this for 2021, 2022. Um, if, if there ever was a time to push back and I know people might be watching this thinking, Title IX, well, that's, you know, Title IX, isn't that, isn't that good because it brought, you know, women's sports equality and stuff like that? Yeah, that part of it was, was great. Uh, this is a family friendly word. The, these, these rules that were put into place are deeply twisted versions of the initial intent. They, under the guise of protecting rights, they keep, um, people who have potentially as bad as, uh, accused of sexual assault tries to keep them around their, around the people that they victimized, uh, to, it is, uh, it, it is absolutely ridiculous. And if, as far as I'm concerned, if the, if the Biden administration says, we want you to follow normal, reasonable school district types of rules in your state for dealing with expulsions as you always have, rather than have this twisted application of Title IX and we're not enforcing it, um, yeah, I will take, I will absolutely take my chances with that over, over the alternative. Um, I am not, I am not necessarily a hard no for the remainder of this school year only, but I, I, what, what worries me is that it just becomes, it just becomes, you know, then the next year, it's gonna be, well, we do, you know, I, I would imagine what's likely by July is that the Biden administration will say, we are not enforcing certain of the draconian aspects of this pending the rulemaking process, but it won't be done yet.
But we, but they don't get to say that, Andrew. I, I just wanna correct you on that. They don't get to say that they're not gonna enforce it because as Ellen said, they carry the force of laws. It's not the Biden administration, it's the courts. So what hap, would happen would be someone would make a complaint to OCR. OCR would come in, do an investigation, find that we're not complying with the administrative rules and then that would then end up in the courts. It's not for the Biden administration.
But Biden, Biden tells the OCR what to do, just as Trump told the OCR that instead of focusing on real discrimination issues in the community, we want you to, we want you to nail some school districts for not, uh, closed captioning their stuff good enough because we care about deaf people, right?
That wasn't, those weren't administrative rules though, Andrew. These are administrative rules that carry the force of law. That's completely different than what those dear colleague letters were, which was what, um, which were just really the, the goals of that administration at the time. They didn't carry the force of law. And when OCR comes in, OCR opens up all of your books and examines everything and you are in a very difficult, lengthy process of reviewing all of your Title IX compliance.
Okay, but who does the OCR answer to?
They answer to the laws and the administrative regulations that are on the books. It's not, uh, it's not the administration that can tell them that they have the authority to not enforce administrative regulations which carry the force of law.
Right. Does they certainly, do they not direct the priorities and say that your resources are to go to this, to all these things? I mean, there are, I, I would, I would, I, don't get me wrong. I would love it if there was a better balance with the executive branch versus other places, but I don't, I don't think that's where we've been going. And we've been going the other, we've been going the other way for a while. And I just, I mean, there, there's this, okay, this won't, this won't be solved tonight. I do think long term, I'm concerned that an independent hearing officer, I, I, I think family, I think kids deserve the right, however unlikely it is that the board would vote differently. I think they have the right to plead their case to the board. And I think, and I think the hearing officer's recommendation, I think it, yeah, I think you have a right to be heard by the board. I would consider this temporarily. I just don't think we'll ever close that door once we open it. That's what my, I'm torn about right now.
Go ahead, Laura.
Um, so what you were just talking about, Melissa, what would our liability insurance carrier think about that?
I don't wanna speak for them, but if you are operating in a way that you know is contrary to what, um, the law says or what you're required to do, that liability carrier has the basis to deny coverage to you.
Thank you. And then the other thing is regarding this, this training, um, do you guys know what that costs per person by any chance or just kind of a ballpark figure for like one board member to attend that training?
Yeah. Ellen, do you wanna speak to that?
Um, yes. Um, we do, we have purchased, um, training modules, um, that we can use, um, as, as a starting point, I believe. Um, but if we are looking at board members, we may, um, need to revisit that because of the fact that this involves up until, up until the board, nobody's doing a live hearing in, um, in the Title IX process. You would be the live hearing. It's not required under K-12, but it comes into play when it becomes an expulsion hearing. So then all of the requirements that, that the law requires for a live hearing for Title IX, which is much different than the requirements under an expulsion hearing. For example, both parties are gonna be present. So you're gonna have, you gotta be careful of what's being asked. Um, it's a whole different ballgame. So we probably would need to relook at the training modules that we purchased. And if we need to revisit that, um, they're probably upwards to about a, and I'm just gonna guess off the top of my head, please don't hold me to this, but they could be upwards to a thousand bucks a person.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Dawn.
Okay. So I just wanna confirm, this is an hourly position? We would pay them for when they, I mean, this, we pay them for when they do the work, right? So if we have two expulsion in a year, we'd pay them for those two expulsions. Um, how easily, how easily do you think you'll be able to fill this position? I don't know what, what availability is of attorneys looking to, you know, take on this kind of work.
Yeah. So as part of your materials, last year, when we did bring this to the board, we went, um, forward with a request for proposals from individuals who'd be interested in serving. We received back three, um, um, answers to our request of attorneys who are qualified to do this work. I, I know the, these attorneys personally, they do not represent the district. They would be qualified in order to do so. We'd ask the board, um, in closed session to review these with us and we would review their credentials and their qualifications to make sure that you would be, um, okay with those individuals. And then they, we would have more than one, given that we need a person to be available, um, within the timelines that are set forth in the statute. That's what most of the other school districts who have IHOs do. They have a panel that they choose from and who's ever available serves. And then, um, and then we would go from there. But we do have, based on last year, prior to the pandemic, individuals who had, um, answered our request for proposal.
And Melissa, because I'm, I'm new to this, um, how long, I mean, like if we're looking at an expulsion, how long does that typically take? Like what kind of hours are we looking at here?
Yep. So when we looked into this, I had an opportunity to speak with a few IHOs who worked for the Madison School District. They usually take about an hour or two to prep for the hearing. And then the hearing is, um, anywhere from an hour to two hours usually. Um, I, I, I know you haven't had a chance to serve on an expulsion hearing since you've been on the board. And then, um, they write up their recommendation to the board, which takes an hour or so. And then, and then I would be given the, um, the IHO's recommendation and I would present that to you in closed session. And then you would review that, uh, recommendation as well as the evidentiary record and then vote to approve, deny or modify what the IHO is recommending.
Okay. Thank you. That's helpful.
Go ahead, Noah.
All right. Thank you. I know this is kinda in the weeds as far as a student asking a couple of questions, but I hope you don't mind. Um, so I'm just trying to understand this. If this were to occur, an expulsion under this, um, it would definitely be, the situation would be that students would be expelled without being able to explain their side to the board directly because it would go to the hearing officer? Or am I wrong about that?
The, a transcript is taken of the hearing. Uh, there's a court reporter who records everything that's done in the hearing. That transcript and the record of the hearing, the IHO's recommendation then goes to the board to review and the board reviews that information in determining whether the student, they should modify, accept or deny what the IHO is, is recommending. So the, the individual is not sitting in front of board members, but what the individual is saying to the IHO in the course of that hearing is presented to the board.
Okay. Thank you. That, that's good to know about the, about the, the actual transcript from a court reporter. That's, that's good. Okay, thank you. That, that's good to know about the, about the, the actual transcript from a court reporter. That's, that's good. Um, I'm trying, so under the new rules as presented, are all expulsions going to be subject to this, to what we just had a presentation on, or only ones that are due to Title IX?
The board cannot, um, differentiate between who gets an IHO and who gets the school board for a hearing. It's one or the other.
So even though these requirements aren't necessarily directly laid out for a non-Title IX expulsion, you can't pick and choose, so you have to?
That would violate every process if you gave someone IHO and you gave some the school board.
Okay, um, okay, that answered a few of these. I'm sorry, just reading through here real quick. Um, okay, so what are, what, so the board's protections against perhaps a more, um, liberal or conservative, not politically, just as far as throwing out punishment, a hearing officer that tends one way or leans the other would be the transcript. Are there any other protections that a student might have against, uh, a hearing officer that is, tends to be a little looser or is a little bit more like a Packers ref?
The, the IHO is not making the decision. They're making a recommendation. So there is, there is the one constant in all of this is the school board and the school board has their own, um, I, you know, principles, their own tolerance, that, that is all still in play. It is, it is simply someone who is conducting the hearing, taking in the evidence, following the rules of evidence. The individual has been trained in all of the Title IX requirements, is applying all of the requirements in those hearings that are necessary for a Title IX proceeding where, where that applies. And then is giving the, um, the, the case over to the school board who then evaluates the case and makes the decision the same as they do now. They're just not, the individual is just not sitting in front of the school board during a live hearing.
So the idea is to standardize that all, you can go to any hearing officer and you're going to end up with the same report and then the board, no matter who the officer is?
Well, they're going to have a little bit different flavor of how they write things, but the idea is you're going to end up with the same decision. You know, a student who, uh, brings a done onsite is going to get the same discipline, whether they're in front of, uh, the independent hearing officer Jones or independent hearing officer Smith, because that record is getting turned over to the board and the board is making the ultimate decision.
Okay, thank you for, thank you for that, that helped me explain it. I, I would just say to the board, yeah, I don't, I don't know, I, I haven't done all the research and of course that other people have into this. I think there is something to be said for making sure the board has the most possible control when it comes to serious issues like expulsion uh, over, over the process at all times. But because of the complete mess of, of administrative rule and, and everything else, I would understand if it did need to happen for this year, I guess that, that might make sense, but in the, the, as long as it can be gotten rid of if the board chooses to realistically. And I hope you guys keep your options open if you do choose to adopt this for going into future years of how you might be able to avoid having this hearing officer so that you can have the most direct content with the, with the student, uh, who might be expelled. Beyond that, it's, it's kind of all above my head. Uh, thank you, Ms. President. That answered my question.
Go ahead, Rhonda.
Um, thanks. So Melissa, I have just a few questions. Um, so going back to the conversation that we had last year, um, I know this has been brought forward a few times, but my recollection of the conversation was that it was to save board members' time. And, and the flavor of this, and I looked it up because it was reported on in the press times, so I pulled up the article and I looked through that. And, um, and Brenda had brought it forward and, and the conversation was that the board actually, um, we would be afforded more time for, for other things that we needed to do in, in regards to board business. And maybe this would deter, um, these expulsion hearings would maybe deter people from wanting to run for the board. So that was what was, that was the, the, I guess, the explanation last time for why this should be something we should consider.
Can I speak to that? I didn't write that article. That, that would have been what the reporter picked up from?
No, those are actually quotes from, uh, from the meeting, so.
Were they my quote? Were they my quote?
No, I said Brenda.
Okay.
So then, um, so then I'm trying, so I'm trying to understand because that sounded like it was a time issue. So now what I'm hearing is, um, this is a different reason. So, and I'm, I'm also hearing that time is not necessarily saved because if ultimately we are going into a closed session after the independent hearing officer takes um, information, does a hearing, and then we go into a closed session, and if we are listening to a transcript, I'm assuming, I mean, and then maybe walk us through that, right? We go into a closed session and you're there with the recommendation. What, what are, are we actually, what do we have access to as far as like the transcript and how much time are we still receiving the, like the expulsion packet that we typically received with a lot of information and backstory? Are we receiving any history of the student when it comes to academics? You know, the schools they attended, uh, behavior reports? Are we receiving that same information as well? Because that's what we're receiving, you know, during the expulsion hearings right now. So, so take us into the, the closed hearing or the closed session. You bring us what exactly?
So the, the independent hearing officer conducts the, conducts the hearing and then have X amount of days to then write the recommendation. Board then has X amount of days following receipt of that recommendation to review that recommendation and make a decision. So you're not meeting on the same day as when the, as when the expulsion happens. You'd be meeting at a, a different time. Um, other school districts who do this typically, um, align them when you have your regular meetings on Monday. So it would be a, a closed session before your regular board meeting. You would get the evidentiary information, including the expulsion packet. Um, you would have the transcript available to review it. We obviously would not read it word for word, but if you would like clarification based on not understanding something from the, um, independent hearing officer's recommendation, we would have the opportunity to review that.
Can you, can you, can you maybe state how, like, if you had to estimate how much time would it take to go through a transcript of a hearing? Just an estimated time.
Entire transcript of a hearing?
Well, I mean, what I'm interested in and knowing is realistically, how much time are we sitting in this closed session? Realistically, to provide that informed decision on the recommendation? How much time are we actually sitting and listening to the transcript as well as going through the evidentiary information?
You're not going to listen to the transcript. You're going to review the recommendation and if you have questions, we have the transcript available to verify from the transcript your question. You would not review the entire transcript of the hearing. That's typically what is done, but it's available to you if you want to do it.
I guess I'm wondering how we would have questions if we didn't listen to the, all the information? How would we know what kind of questions to ask if we didn't listen?
Because the independent hearing officer is going to write up a recommendation. So I don't know if you ever review the findings of fact and conclusions of law that are typed up after, um, expulsion hearing. That is essentially what the independent hearing officer writes up. Their findings of fact and their conclusion of law and then their recommendation to you. That's what you review. If you have questions regarding, you know, they're saying this was a finding of fact. I, I'm not understanding based on reviewing the packet and based, based on this finding of fact, I'm not seeing how that aligns. We would have the opportunity to that, to review the transcript.
So I guess when I, when I think about this though, um, and I would hope, um, I would hope to be on this board in order to move forward with this, um, but if we're looking at this through an equity lens, which I sure hope we are, and we're looking at this as what is serving the student first, I, I sure hope and I can't imagine that we wouldn't have questions and that we wouldn't need to take that time to go through the transcript because otherwise we are basically gratuitous, right? And a means to an end. So I'm interested in knowing what, what do you believe and maybe, because it seems like there's been a lot of research done on this, right? In the past, what do you believe we would need as far as time goes? What I'm concerned about is it's five o'clock on a Monday. A student's very delicate, you know, their, their life, their, their future, um, some, because I've sat through, in the three years I've been on the board, I've sat through many expulsion hearings. These are very difficult times for the family as well as for the district. What happens when it's five o'clock? We have questions. We want to give this, this student and their family the best result for themselves. Because it sounds like we have an opportunity to potentially reverse this decision, but we are only going to do that and, and do this in the way that we need to if we have enough time. So I'm concerned that it's five o'clock, we have this information, we have questions, we're running out of time because we have a six o'clock meeting, so we're going to half-ass this. Sorry, I'm just going to say that word. We're going to half-ass this and we're going to get through the situation because we have a, a deadline at six o'clock and we're not going to ask the questions necessary and we're not going to provide the equity that we need to. I'm just really concerned about that in itself and maybe that will never happen, right? But I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand if we have options. It sounds, from the discussion, it sounds like we still have options, right? Because it's a time factor. You know, you're throwing out the time that's involved.
I didn't throw the time factor at all tonight. I, I never mentioned time tonight at all.
Okay, so, so there has been time factors mentioned, right? It's eight to 10 hours or, or something of that nature.
Of the, of the Title IX training, but not productive hearings.
Okay. So, but I'm hearing that we need to make this decision because of something that we, we're not willing to do or we aren't interested in doing or we, it, it would be too, too much for us to do. So instead, we're going to take a recommendation. We're not going to ever see the student and their family's faces. And this is what concerns me, right? We're not going to ever be able to have that experience with them. Um, and what does that do? When we have expulsion hearings, what have we learned a lot as board members? We've learned about maybe potential breakdowns in our system when it comes to equity and discipline and, and, and other, and other cultural and, and, you know, things going on in our district. We, we learn a lot about that. Sometimes we learn about our student services that maybe need some improvement. We learn about, um, we really learn about our community and, and their family, at least maybe I'm speaking for myself, but we learn about what our families are dealing with sometimes in the community. We learn a lot of very valuable information. So when we are being asked to consider something that's absolutely, I mean, it's, it's, it's a big switch of what we've been doing, even though these are, are difficult. I feel like as board members, these, these very difficult experiences are some of the most, I mean, it, it's reality in your face about what some of our families and our students are dealing with. So if we're being asked to, to consider this, I want to make sure that we're not just ramrodding something that we don't really have answers to. How can we guarantee and make sure that, that hour of that closed session, or even if it's an hour and a half, how can we make sure that we're actually doing this family the best service that we can? Now, do we owe it to them? That's probably debatable, but I want to know specifically, if we're not looking, we don't get additional evidence, if we don't necessarily go through the transcript, what do you picture us sitting there doing other than here's a recommendation? You know, how, if, if one or two board members wants the transcript, is it going to be like, oh my God, you know, another half hour, we could be out of here. I'm so concerned about that. Because if we're, if we're not giving, if we're not giving the transcript and we're really only looking at what one person decided and they don't present any foundational facts to us, right? They don't, right?
No, I, I just want to take you a step back because, because there was a lot there and I'm trying to stay focused on exactly all that was there. But I think we got to take a step back. The person you are hiring as an independent hearing officer is someone who is very, very experienced in education law, who conducts these hearings a- across the state with respect to expulsions, who is well-versed in all of the things, all of the equity principles, all of those things that you just discussed, Rhonda. If we're talking about school districts like Madison and Milwaukee and other very large school districts like Green Bay who have adopted this system and have done this for a number of years and who may have had those same concerns you do. But I, I would encourage you to reach out to some of those school board members and ask how, how it works in their, in their school district with respect to those concerns that you just raised. And I think what you will find is that the concerns you're raising are addressed through the process of the board reviewing the independent hearing officer's, uh, recommendations. Being comfortable with the independent hearing officer that they've hired, recognizing that the independent hearing officer is there to provide the exact same type of hearing with the exact same due process protections as the school boards provide for those students attentive to those exact same issues that you are raising. And then when you get that recommendation in closed session, and I, I can't tell you how long it's going to take for the school board to review those decisions. You know, maybe we start out with starting to give you two hours to do it so that we become comfortable with the process. But it's entirely up to the school board as to what you want to do in reviewing the recommendation and the hearing transcript and the hearing record. And then as we get more comfortable with that, if this is something that you want to continue with, then that process will develop. But we can't say from the beginning, we're going to give you one hour to review the transcript and the hearing uh, documents and the recommendation and that's all you get and when the, the timer goes off, you have to have a decision. That would never be appropriate and I would never go in to the process that way. I, I know Steve has, has quite a bit of experience of, of an IHO. They use one in Wausau and it worked well there. Uh, our surrounding, our neighbors use it. Um, again, it's still providing all of those protections to, to students. It's still allowing the board to make the ultimate decision. It is just simply a way to recognize all of the new requirements that are placed on school boards with respect to Title IX and providing a process that's compliant with the law and still affording students their due process protections. The IHO existed well before Title IX. School districts use IHOs well before Title IX. This is just a way to solve the current issue that we're facing with Title IX. We've brought this forward to the school board before, so this is not something that is just, uh, being introduced again to the school board.
Okay, but it is being introduced again. So what, what, what concerns me about that though, just how you framed it, right? This is an expert. They've been doing this forever. Trust the professional, right? We've heard this before. So what does that usually mean? Don't question them.
Absolutely not. Absolutely.
Well, I'm, I'm.
I've heard that, Rhonda. That is absolutely not the case. The role of the school board is to review the decision. I'm saying you can trust the process. You can trust someone who is legally trained to provide students with their due process rights and to provide a fair hearing to the parent. But it is absolutely your job to question what the IHO is recommending. That is your job. That's what the statute provides.
And I, and I appreciate that, but I wonder how much we can question when we only have a bit of information. So that is what I'm concerned about.
You'll have the whole transcript. I don't understand what you're saying. You only have a bit of the information.
If the transcript isn't part of the process to begin with and it's just, it has to be requested. Now, is this something, let's say one board member wants to see the transcript. Are the other board members going to sit there and wait for that one board member to look through the transcript? I mean, how does that, that actually work?
That will be up for you to decide as a school board, how you want that process.
And that's concerning to me because then it has to be a majority that want to see the transcript. So I feel like this just doesn't feel, this feels like we're checking a box, but it's, it doesn't feel like it's going to be as fair and equitable for families at, at all. It doesn't feel like it's going to be as fair and equitable for families at all, it just doesn't.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in, uh, I know I want to call on, uh, Andrew and somebody else, but I just want to speak to, uh. Something first, so first of all, um, you know, just on its face to, to, you know, whether or not you agree with the law or you think the law is going to change. Um, our legal experts in the district are coming forward saying that we're not in compliance and we need to do something, so. Uh, that, uh, by itself should be enough to, to at least support this, knowing that it is a temporary decision. Um, that, that would at least cover ourselves until we, you know, can get to a, a different time. Um, but I, I want to speak to you, Rhonda, you talked a lot about the service to our district and when, when we think about this, I, I'm with you, I mean, I. I've sat in a lot of these, uh, experiences and they're gut wrenching and you take a lot into consideration of how it impacts a kid's life. And, uh, it's been my experience at the Board in general. Um, you know, while safety is certainly a concern, we want to make sure that we're giving kids second chances and I, you know, third chances, fourth chances, fifth chances. And I think one of the things that, uh, I really appreciate about the Green Bay School District and other districts. That I've been in, uh, compared to other districts is, uh, how we, we have options for kids, we look for other chances, we've. We're, we're a bigger district with more opportunities. Um, so I would be concerned, uh, I'm not based upon everything that Melissa shared about our ability to, to take a look at. Um, the information that's available and be able to make that final decision. Um, but that, that would be a concern that I have, that, that we're not, uh, suspending or expelling kids. Uh, in situations that, that maybe we, in Green Bay, we would treat differently. Um, what I am concerned though is the, the experience for our families and. I have seen time and time and time again in my two years. Um. Students. And their families being put off by the availability of board members. So an email will go out and say, you know, I need board members available, we have an expulsion hearing come up. Um, some board members don't respond, um, others say, nope, I'm not available, I can only do this, my job is less flexible. I, I think that that speaks to also, you know, future board members, so we're saying. You know, you, you need to have a flexible job to be able to attend these expulsion hearings. Just, uh, I think it was two weeks ago. Um, because this also applies to readmittance hearings, I would imagine, we had a student who had been expelled. Who was asking to come back in the district, I've met all my requirements, can I please come back, can I please come back? That student's, uh, readmittance got pushed back by three weeks because there was no availability. Uh, for, to get four board members to come in and accept that student back into our district. Um, so when you want to talk about an experience, yes, I'm concerned about making sure that the right decisions are made. I feel good about the explanation that we got from, uh, Melissa and Ellen that we will be able to have that. I certainly don't want to be in a situation where, um, I don't have ample time to review and make that big decision because it is a big decision. Um, but the service that we're providing to our families who are either waiting for a decision. Uh, that will impact them on whether or not they stay in our district or whether or not they come back, whoa. I love my hands, um, about whether or not they can come back in. Um, I, I think what we're doing right now as a district is, uh, is, is no better, uh, than, than what you've been describing. Um. I'll go to Andrew next, I don't know if I saw any other hands up, go ahead, Andrew.
Okay, so there are some elements in this and, and I, I understood that there was, uh. A review of the process, I, I didn't perhaps understand that it was. Uh, so complete as to be a full, a full transcript, that's a, that's a level of review of, a level of detail that is not. I'm, I'm sure it's probably always available for certain things, but it's not, it's not what I'm used to, um. There. I, I guess I. I'm open to. It, it's certainly, it's certainly something where. I, I, I assumed, first I assumed that would probably be a hard no right off the bat and then I kind of assumed that would be, uh. A hard no unless this was needed on an interim basis to get us through the, the, um. What, what's going on with Title IX and I'll, I'll, I'll talk to you about the deep in the weed stuff with you at another time, um. Melissa, sometime in the next two weeks, I'll try to do that. Um. And if we can't. I would likely propose it if it had a hard sunset date in it for just the rest of the year to get us through, just in case, I would probably vote for that too. Um. There, there could be, there could be some advantages here, but I get, but, but Rhonda has a, a valid. Point here too, I, I think there are certain types of things. That we might not learn because they come up in conversation and, and part of that hearing process. That are things that have led to action that are maybe things an independent hearing officer wouldn't. Probe and I, nor would I expect the hearing officer to because it's not within the, right, it's not within their. Stated duties and it's not within our, it wasn't within our stated duties in. Um, certain cases where we had discussions as the result of an expulsion hearing about. Uh. Disciplinary practice that may have been disproportionate or, or, or was it, or can we get some more information? Or did, you know, are we giving all these, are students getting alternatives? Um. Because probably all these, all the expulsions that come to the hearing officer, I, I would be very, very surprised if any expulsions ever came to the hearing officer. That the hearing officer actually rejected because they did not meet the legal standards. It would be, no. You're muted.
I, I see Ellen wants to say that, say something, but that, that is not true, in fact, the Madison hearing officers. Um, a number of cases have made their way to the DPI because the Madison hearing officers. Have rejected them because they did not meet the statutory criteria and they are even more strict on. The statutory criteria for meeting the, the necessary elements for an expulsion. One, one other thing that I just want to quick point on and then I'm gonna turn this over to Ellen. I, I am aware that one school district, uh, we, video records the hearings and school board members then. Watched those videos of the expulsion hearing prior to going to the closed session, so it's not just a review of the transcript. And the hearing officer's recommendation, they actually commit to watching those videos of. The, um, hearing officers, uh, conducting of that hearing. And then they're prepared then to review the recommendations from the school, from the IHO. And then be able to augment those recommendations or reject or approve those, but I know Ellen has been wanting to make a point, so I just want to. Let Ellen get that in.
I want to clarify something, um, to both Andrew and Rhonda's, um, concerns. Um, with respect to Title IX. Um, one thing that you need to, to understand for a Title IX hearing is the rules of evidence are extremely, extremely different. A lot of the questions that you may be able to ask in an expulsion hearing will not be able to be asked if it's a Title IX hearing. There are very specific rules of evidence as to what is relevant. And, and there will have to be a decision on the fly as to what is relevant. And you will have to, that's where your biggest training will come in. And you will not be able, there's going to be, you're gonna find there's going to be a lot of questions that you may want to ask. Personal to a student that you will not be able to ask in a Title IX hearing. I just want to put that out there so you understand that there's going to be two different. Standards depending on the reason that they are coming forward for expulsion. It will look a lot different if they're coming forward for expulsion, for, for example, bringing forth a gun onto school premises. Versus somebody who is being accused of sexually assaulting another student. They are gonna look extremely different, I just want to put that out there. Um, and I know that, um, a lot of times you want to have questions that get to, um, the heart of the student's. Family and their matter and what they're going to. I'm going to say that you will not be able to ask that under a Title IX hearing, that will, you will not be able to find that out. The law will not allow you to ask that. I'm, I, I know you don't like that answer, I'm not sure that I like that answer. I'm just putting forth, I just need you to understand that there are two very different standards that you're gonna have to understand. For the two different type of expulsion hearings.
I just have one more, I just have one more thing and if the answer is. Clearly yes or no, tell me and if it's, if it's for a bigger, more detailed discussion, that's, you know, separately, that's okay too. Um. If, isn't it? Likely if not certain that if an expellable offense occurs, even if it, the incident was, was a Title IX incident. Which may require a Title IX hearing. Isn't it very, very likely that other regular district expellable, that offense policy was violated? In the process, if that. Does that make sense? Like if someone, if someone committed a. Sexual assault against a fellow student or a staff member, they would also. Be violating the district policy on. Bullying and, or physically, physically injuring another person, right?
Once it comes under, um, Title IX, Andrew. We are forced to follow the Title IX procedure, it does not matter if it falls under any other school board policy. You, if it's a Title IX, um, qualification event, we must follow those procedures. So you, you will be, you won't be able to choose a regular expulsion hearing for sexual assault. Because it violated policy, like the bullying policy, you can't do that, you have to follow, the law requires that you follow the Title IX procedure.
Okay, um, alright, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop there and I will, I will give you a. I'll give you a call Melissa and I, I would, I would probably be able to live with supporting this through the end of the. Academic year, but I'm still gonna say there is one place an independent hearing officer is not likely to get. Which is in some of these expulsion hearings that I remember. Where we got into things like. Although it may not have changed the decision of the expulsion, I, I remember times that I was questioned for talking a, a lot about. Did this person really understand the system and putting the, looking from, through my own lens. You know, hey, wait a minute, I'm pretty certain that as a parent who understands systems and rules and comes from a position of. Uh, privilege and so forth. Just having this bad feeling that if, if, uh, someone had resources, they would have found a different. Way and I won't go further with that in public, but that's, that's something that. We had to find out for ourselves and it's also something that. Um. Judy Crane and I. Kind of. Came up with, or, it let, discussions during these expulsion hearings led to our creating. What was then called the abeyances and allowing people who we didn't have to for special ed reasons. To have expulsion alternatives, we were one of the first because of, because of Judy Crane. Probably getting sick of me saying one more time, why can't we do this? So when I said, okay, then let's propose something and we did and we started doing it. So those are important things that. I, I certainly wouldn't even pretend to ask the hearing officer, because that's outside the hearing officer's job, now might it? Might it still come up in a review session of the Board? Maybe, but it's a little hard, it's a little harder to come up that way, so. It's, it's still a, it's still a valid point, but I'll, I'll stop there for now. For, for tonight, for this round.
I have one more.
Yep, go ahead.
So Melissa, with the criteria of the three individuals, not getting specific. About them personally, but what? Do you believe qualifies someone for this position? What is something that? You know, what made you choose the three that you looked at and what is, what is the criteria?
I didn't look at three, we got three submissions and. As a, a baseline screener, they are all qualified to perform this role, you will decide. When we bring their applications to, if you believe that they are. Um, qualified. To perform the, the role of an IHO, I, that's not my decision, that's your decision.
Okay, right, but you had three submissions of people that are qualified, are they just qualified because they? I'm sorry, my cats are biting, stop. Um. Are we looking at these people and their work with equity? That's my, that's my biggest concern. We know that disproportionately we expel students that don't look like us. That's a fact, so. I'm concerned about that.
Well, their jo, their job is not. Their job is to apply the policy and the statute to the offense. That, that's their job, so with respect to whether we're expelling kids that don't look like us. That wouldn't be a role of an IHO, the role of the IHO to conduct the expulsion hearing. Apply the law, apply the policy and provide due process to the student. It's your job then to decide whether the student is expelled based on that recommendation.
Okay, so where does equity fall into this equation? How can we reassure families, knowing we're a minority majority district? Where does equity fall into this equation in general? There is an issue with expulsions in black and brown families and students, that's a fact, right? That's not just us, that's nationwide. So when the Board of Education takes and we bring someone in, some, a random person that's not. Elected and not part of the community necessarily that. Is involved with board business and school district business and whatnot, how can we assure? Those families that there is an equity component in this equation? Because that's a question.
Yeah, the equity is providing the same level of due process care and concern. At a hearing to whether the student is white, brown, black or yellow, it did, or, or has disabilities. The, the role of equity in a hearing is providing due process and. Applying the rules and the policies in an equitable manner, that's where equity comes in in the hearing. I don't think that the IHO is going to get at your concern of. That the student is being brought forward for expulsion, that is not the determination of the IHO, that's the determination. Of the Board's direction to administration as to what offenses qualify as. Um, violations to bring forward for expulsions and that's what you've directed us to do with respect to who gets brought forward. For an expulsion.
Okay, sure, so we clearly need to work on that as well. Um, but that is something that I've been asked about with this on the agenda. And it, and we're discussing it, potentially choosing a random person to come into this equation. Um, that is something that's concerning to some, some families. And my, my other question is. So we hire someone hourly. What is, what is the average, what's the going rate for someone? To do this job?
I included in your materials, um, a, a chart of what other school districts pay. Their IHOs, um, and it's all open up for, um. Negotiations, but that information was included in your materials for tonight.
Yeah, can you actually just state it on record though? Do you mind?
Yep, um, it ranges anywhere from a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour. To a flat fee per hearing for some, um, IHOs down in the Milwaukee area. Uh, Madison pays around a hundred and fifty dollars an hour. Um, Howard Swamaco pays a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour and that. Relatively speaking, for hourly rates for attorneys is, is pretty low.
Okay, but comparatively to, I know Laura had brought up the training, um, expenditure. It's really, it's definitely a wash if not. Depending on how many we have, obviously. Right? If you're looking at comparing the two, um.
And to me Rhonda, it's not a financial issue, the issue is.
No, I'm just saying, if the financial issue was compared, comparing training expenditure versus. Attorney fees, I think we probably win on that.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know if it was raised for purposes of comparison or just to ask how much it would cost for training, but. Again, the issue is the Board's qualification. how much it costs for training, but again, the issue is the board's qualifications and ability to follow the requirements of Title IX and the training component that are necessary to even conduct the hearing. If we had an expulsion tomorrow, we wouldn't be able to hold it. That, that's, that's why we're bringing this forward.
And so, because it's not like we don't have options. We just don't have them, options for tomorrow.
Well.
This is basically, right? I mean, that's.
We need.
If it was an emergency or something happened where we had to do that.
We need, we would need four board members to be trained.
Right. And so this is like a short-term fix? Is there potential to write into a motion, something to that nature that determines?
Just a reminder, you, you can't, you can't authorize an IHO for longer than the school year in which it's currently adopted. So you can adopt it as far back as July 1st or up to June 15th this year, but it cannot extend past June 30th without a vote by the board to reauthorize it for the next school year.
Okay, thank you.
And you can't take that vote until after July 1st.
Okay.
Rhonda, did you have a question?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Oh, Rhonda, you're good.
Yeah, I'm good. Thanks. I was gonna, Melissa already made the point I was gonna bring up.
All right. Melissa, is there, I know there's a kind of a second agenda item on the rule. Is there anything specific you needed to address there?
No, the rule just provides the board, the board rule that would accompany the expulsion policy with respect to the board's ability to appoint an IHO. It doesn't require the ability, or does not require the board to appoint an IHO. So even if the board is not comfortable moving forward and is going to go forward with the Title IX training rather than appoint an IHO, it would be our recommendations to at least adopt that rule. So if we are in this predicament again, that we're not gonna have to come back with the rule, again, it doesn't require you to have the IHO. It just sets forth the administrative process for if an IHO was appointed and it would be on the books. Being able to just rely on that at a point that any other board, if they were to adopt an IHO going forward.
All right. Any final questions on that? Okay, going into adjournment, would just ask if there's any future board meeting requests as we adjourn? Go ahead, Andrew.
So I did submit in, in writing in an email, a request regarding class size that was supposed to be on tonight's agenda and got missed. And that was already acknowledged, but that I, for, for next week or for, for February 8th. And then I also have what, what I believe to be a very minimalist proposal to address the fact that it's overlooked what happens if student reps wish to request participation in a, in a special meeting where it's kind of silent on what happens there. So, and I submitted that in email format as well. Both of those things I think are relevant and time sensitive because class staffing decisions and course schedules are being selected now and student representation being more important than ever and the potential of special meetings that could have to do with return to in-person. So I put those in an email, but wanted to say it here too.
Yep. I got those requests and apologize for the miscommunication. So appreciate you making those requests. Rhonda, did you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to touch on, I know I had sent an email last week about, I'm just reading it, what we're going to do for our students with regards to the achievement gap that is widening as well as the students who have lost interest in education entirely. What is the plan to address this? I was told that this might be possibly coming in February. Right?
Yeah. So we talked to the team and they would certainly be interested in coming forward at that work session in February and sharing an update on it.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of families wondering about that, what that looks like, especially with being almost a year that kids haven't been in school. So that'd be great. And then, and I talked to Steve about this today. So there are parents who were part of the superintendent parent advisory committee who are really kind of interested and and curious about maybe having that start up again, maybe for spring and then moving into conversations about next year, hoping that maybe that can be revisited. And I don't know if that's an agenda topic. I don't know if that's a discussion. I don't know if that's just, I just wanted to put it out there. I, I let them know that I would bring it up tonight.
Okay. I share with Rhonda format that we might be able to consider that might make sure that we've got good representation from across the district too. So I, and I, I talked to Lori after I talked to Rhonda today and I'm gonna share those materials with her and we're gonna look at the next steps for that process.
Yeah, I thought it sounded like a great idea. So. Thank you.
All right. If there's nothing else, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, motion, meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling 920-448-2025 or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.